Come up with concrete ways to use common language when talking to stakeholders about equity issues. COVID is a big deal and has impacted all of us in many ways, but to say it is all consuming is unacceptable. Hire a race and equity coordinator. You don't need to wait for an audit to do that. Offer staff stipends from each school to form a working race and equity committee. Set a purpose and give staff at least three professional learning times to analyze a unit and our curriculum within the equity scorecard. It is eye opening as I had to do it this year. Systemic racism and discrimination cannot be fixed in a school year, but the job of a district is to plant seeds of compassion and empathy. Saying we will not be hasty as delayed action and delayed action on behalf of the board for little steps is another day where students may not feel safe or welcome at school. It is another day where students go without knowing our full history as a country or only learn a whitewashed curriculum. It is another day where students do not have the skills to have the uncomfortable conversations and lean in or learn how to lean in or staff members unintentionally make comments that are hurtful to our students. It is another day where our 11% minority students internalize the hate and our ignorance around them and that one's deep. Empower them. So I am begging you, please set the tone, do the small steps along with the big one this year because action will not make things worse, but inaction will.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jill Kibbe.
Somebody just informed me that there's an issue with the live link. You two?
So I was just texting about the live link. Do we know why that's not live too?
I understand they're working on it.
Yes, yeah, they are. They are working on it. They're trying to figure out why that's not, why that's not. Do we have some idea ETA on it? Otherwise, we should probably proceed with our comments, but if it's going to be in a couple of minutes, I'm willing to wait. So keep up the opportunity to hear other comments heard. Yeah, we should. All right, you got the thumbs up. Very good. I haven't started your time yet, but go ahead and start.
Hi, my name is Jill Kibbe and my son Thomas Kibbe wrote something on the petition that I'd like to read. As a student at Hudson High School, class of 2004, I had great teachers and coaches. I believe the Hudson School District cares about equality, education, diversity, God. Now, a college history teacher and PhD candidate at W Madison, I believe that pushing for more Native American and African American in history classes is especially crucial because it has been for so long, now predominantly white communities like Hudson and countless other little towns throughout the US to simply ignore teaching the deep historical reality of chattel slavery and Euro-American colonialism in North America and beyond, not to mention the histories of Jim Crow segregation and structural racism to the present. Mine was an experience as a white kid in a predominantly white town. Almost every teacher, coach, and employer I had growing up was white. In the days before social media, I don't blame my teachers for the, or the district for not being aware of the issues raised by this petition when I was in school. But our times demand awareness and effort to see what we haven't looked at before because we could so easily look away. We can no longer look away. I hope for the strength and integrity of the Hudson community that schools make room for other voices so that students can better recognize the diversity within their one small town community and a more accurate picture of the bigger region, country, and the world that exists beyond the St. Craig River. I will be greatly ashamed of the willful ignorance and the naivety of the Hudson School District should they dismiss this petition or fail to address these demands for change.
Next up, we have Lindsay Elwood. And again, please start with your address and comments.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Elwood and my address is 811 11th Street in Hudson. All right. I lived in Hudson for 30 years and this is where I grew up. I attended EP Rock Elementary School and my first experience of being told that I'm different was in kindergarten. A little boy said to me, "You can't be Ariel," you know, from The Little Mermaid, "because you're too dark." Too dark? My friend had brown hair too, and I was confused, not thinking about my skin color. The boy's friends laughed and said, "Yep, your skin is too dark." I looked around the playground and that's when I realized that no one looked like me. When I went home to talk to my parents, they assured me that my olive skin was beautiful and that kids would just be mean sometimes. But throughout elementary, I occasionally would get asked why I was dirty and I felt like I just needed to ignore it. But the behavior did get worse. This made me feel very discouraged. I felt that I had to just go along with the ignorance. This was my new normal. The stereotypes that I would hear, I would just laugh along with them. Oh, how lucky I am to live here in Hudson and not be selling soccer balls on the street. Racist comments about other races were just a joke to my classmates and I just tolerated it. This is how I grew up. We were not taught diversity in school as much as I believe that we should have. Our curriculum included about a week of Black history each year and I can't recall any Latin history. These topics were glossed over and I never learned anything about my heritage. The lack of diversity education in our schools have really placed me in some awkward situations as I moved into a more diverse population. My first time living outside of my parents' home was with my college roommates. They were African American and I learned a lot living with them, but my first experiences growing up with racism was disgusting, but how could I tolerate it? I felt very guilty that I allowed it and the people I called friends would joke about racism. While I was out with my roommates, just on a casual night, Mariah Carey came on and she was a popular pop singer as a mixed race and one of my roommates asked if she was black and I had spoke up proudly and answered she was mulatto. The dynamic changed the room and it was one of my roommates quickly shushed me. Her literal words were, "I should slap that word right out of your mouth." And I learned that that word in Hudson High School was meaning somewhat of mixed Caucasian and African American. And my roommates told me that that is not something that's appropriate to say. So I understand that my time, so I'm just going to kind of skip basically to the point.
Appreciate that. Thank you for your concluding remarks.
But I just want to encourage you to incorporate more acceptance in gender, religion, race, and ethnicity, and sexual orientation so Hudson can just be a better place for people like me to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tobin Bonesteal. Tobin Bonesteal, speaking on inclusion and equality. Please state your address and then we'll begin your time.
I live in Hudson on 725th Street. And I know one of the district areas of focus is having a supportive and inclusive learning environment. And I think one of the things that would definitely help Hudson High School at least have a more supportive environment is talking more on the LGBTQ plus history because I know in my personal experience, the only times I've heard it talked about is when I myself would have to do, where I would choose to do reports on it to educate some of my students and the eighth grade Holocaust presentation when they touched on the, what happened in the Holocaust with, most specifically gay men. And I just think talking more about the history will definitely help students feel more accepted because when we're young, sometimes the only stuff we hear about the people in the LGBTQ plus community is that it's bad, it's a sin, it's awful. And that has a lot of children growing up thinking that they themselves are evil and they need to change something about themselves, but they can't. And I think teaching it in history and health class, in health class, you could talk about sexuality and gender and just different identities and just promote more acceptance in the school. Because I definitely know that when I was younger, I would have appreciated maybe at least just some kind of talk on sexuality or gender because a lot of us kids, we have to just go out into the world and learn all these things ourselves. We have to educate ourselves and some people come to us for education, which can be extremely emotionally draining where you have to constantly validate your own existence to other people. Just having a unit in school where we talk about history and just the LGBTQ plus community in general will definitely help a lot of kids. And I know that on Diversity Day last year, the GSA had a performance where a lot of students and the audience have filmed it and put it on social media to be ridiculed and made fun of, which is obviously not okay. And I think teaching about it will help combat the ignorance and discrimination in our school.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next up is Kristin Emerson. Kristin Emerson, speaking on equity.
Hey, I've worked really hard to get this to three minutes. I'm going to do my best to get it under two. Anyway, I'm Kristin Emerson and I live at 918 Green Street in Hudson. I speak today as a Hudson citizen and a parent. I also bring to the table 19 years of teaching experience in St. Paul, Minnesota. In 19 years as a parent in Hudson, I've witnessed firsthand appalling incidents of bullying, hatred, and intolerance. I've witnessed how isolating it feels to a child to be a part of a district with 5,500 students and feel completely alone and unacknowledged on a day-to-day basis. Today, I'm here advocating for the implementation of a district-wide program that provides racial equity training for all staff as well as LGBTQ plus cultural competence training for all staff. And to clarify, those will be two separate trainings and both equally important. From my personal perspective as a community member, I believe Hudson is far from being the inclusive, informed, tolerant city that it has the potential to be. I know some of you would disagree with that statement, but I encourage you not to turn a blind eye. You only need to search local Facebook pages and you will find racist and anti-LGBTQ rhetoric on a daily basis. On the flip side of that coin, you also don't have to go very far to find an amazing group of people in Hudson who work hard behind the scenes to promote equity, fairness, accurate information, inclusiveness, positivity, tolerance, and acceptance. There is no shortage of available resources. As school board, it is your responsibility to actively seek input from people of color and LGBTQ in our community and in turn seek out community resources. It is your responsibility to look at the demographics in our city and make changes to educational policy and procedure based on the current makeup of our community. And I'm going to use the word active because you need to actively resist the mantra, "I don't see color." You need to actively work to promote tolerance and get unstuck from gender-related norms that have always been around. You must actively discontinue operating under the belief that Hudson is a community free of intolerance and racism. You must actively seek change. I'm almost done. Tonight, I know I'm not asking for something small. I'm asking for you to take the initiative to plant the seeds for a community to experience a complete paradigm shift. I'm asking for a written plan with a designated coordinator, a plan that begins immediately. I'm asking you to please take the leap and invite every single staff member in the Hudson School District, including the school board, to partake in diversity training and LGBTQ cultural competence training. Offering this training is the first step to saying, "We know we can do better and we're here to learn." As a final thought, I'm not an expert about equity, diversity, and tolerance programs, however. I want to offer some resources that people have shared with me. I can also provide names of local citizens who have resources, but I'm not going to put them into public comment. I personally went through chatting with the Pacific Education Group through St. Paul Public Schools and it was pivotal in changing my understanding of race and education. And I'll submit this list in writing, but I want you to look at this first bullet point because your best resources are your community members who are sitting here.
Thank you. And I'm sorry if I can't read the handwriting, but I think it's Katie Hesseford, but it could be Cody Hesseford. Please correct me on the first name.
You're correct. My name's Katie Hesseford, 2325 Oak Ridge Circle in Hudson. Just here to, again, support to increase diversity in the curriculum and staff here in Hudson. I just wanted to share, maybe provide a little personal information about why this is important. I come because my daughter is mixed race. I moved here 10 and a half years ago from Eau Claire. We were in kind of our own little diverse bubble of a very diverse neighborhood, a very diverse daycare, a very diverse 4K program. We moved here and, you know, to share a little bit of my own journey of anti-racism. I had no idea, I had no idea that it would be so difficult for a child to integrate into a community that is so homogeneous. I didn't see color, you know, and as I've all learned, like that's not a helpful comment. I learned that pretty quickly. When in kindergarten, my daughter came home and told me that she was, she was white, like she was in Eau Claire. You know, I've heard all about microaggressions, you know, I had never, except maybe having my ponytail pulled every once in a while in middle school, I never had anyone touch me without permission. Every day, she has her hair touched without permission by multiple kids because it's different and so it must just be okay to touch. I bring this up because these are the types of things that happen when kids aren't educated about diversity and differences and racism and microaggressions. Like others have said, I understand this isn't a small task, but it needs to start with an education. Kids need to learn about diversity and inclusion. They need more than, you know, just one month of Black history. They need to know that racism is alive and well, especially in our current climate. And it shouldn't fall on my 15-year-old daughter to educate her peers as it so often does. Things are different now with COVID, but I can tell you that nearly every day she came home emotionally drained and exhausted from having to educate her peers that yes, racism does exist. And this is what it looks like and being told by other white kids that, no, it doesn't. We need an equity coordinator. We need a written plan of how this is going to happen. We need more diverse staff. My daughter has never once had a teacher, she doesn't know of a single teacher in the district that looks even remotely like her, and that's a problem. We know from studies that kids need role models that look like them and we have none. And I think that by starting this work, by making Hudson a more inclusive community, we will draw more diverse candidates. But I think that you need to figure out how to actively seek them out. So again, I'm just asking you to take into consideration all the other ideas others have posted or commented about. And just here, this is one small example of what it's like as a child living in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tamira Butler. Tamira Butler.
I'm Tamira Butler, 1009 Fifth Street. I'm a public school teacher and the mother of two Hudson High School graduates. And my third child, a high school sophomore, was a student of the Hudson School District from kindergarten until this past August. We now pay tuition for her to attend public school in Minnesota. Recently, my daughter noted to her new school's equity resource coordinator that in contrast to her experiences here, she has not experienced antisemitism at school so far this year. Hudson should be a city with wonderful schools that meet the needs of all of our students, but the staff and students here are simply not prepared to do that yet. Here's a small sampling of the incidents my children have experienced in the Hudson schools. I've had a child questioned by staff on whether our faith was important enough for the child to miss a test given on Yom Kippur. Holiday-themed school events that exclude my children. Most recent example, despite discussion of the issue in advance with staff, a holiday concert song selections completely ignored Hanukkah during a year when Hanukkah and Christmas overlapped. Staff explaining away the actions of a high school student who drew a swastika on a attendance sheet as a joke. Holocaust jokes are common on school buses and in hallways, not to mention on social media among Hudson students. Even immediately following the significant presentation of a Holocaust speaker, Holocaust jokes were heard in the cafeteria. When kids learn only that Jewish people of Europe are victims of Hitler and not why the Germans and the other nations allowed Hitler to murder millions of people, we have failed as educators. These so-called jokes are a symptom of our failure. Students do not learn empathy from a brief exposure to a topic and the only exposure they have here to non-white, non-Christian topics is exceedingly brief. For example, HMS spent multiple weeks on the Catholic Church and the Reformation, yet my daughter was homesick for two days and missed the Judaism unit completely. According to my daughter, everything we learn about history is through the lens of white experience. So generally, we only learn about Africa as it pertains to white people interacting with Africa or we only learn about Native Americans as it pertains to white interaction. The voices and experiences of so-called others need to be taught. Students of the Hudson School District need to be taught the perspectives of diverse groups and cultures to actually prepare them to understand world cultures and global connections to their lives. Hudson students need to read multiple novels over their school years where the main characters are from a different culture and they need to learn about the great African, Asian, Mesoamerican civilizations and cultures apart from the experience of colonization. Many students from Hudson leave Hudson. They move away to college. They join the military. They move for the sake of employment or to find affordable housing. To better prepare our students for those experiences, Hudson schools need to embrace a more diverse and inclusive curriculum.
Thank you. Again, my apologies for any mispronunciation of names, but is it Talia Tijimi? Tajina?
Close, it's Talia Tajima.
All right.
I live at Portia Heritage Boulevard here in Hudson. I'm here to speak in support of the district adopting LGBTQ plus inclusive education support. As a mother living within the district with children in all three schools and one of my children also identifying within the LGBTQ plus community, this is incredibly important to me. The reasons I feel this is important are as follows. In the 2020 Trevor Project, they polled 40,000 LGBTQ identifying youth between the ages of 13 and 24 and they found that 68% reported symptoms of generalized anxiety. 55% experienced major depressive disorder. 48% engaged in some form of self-harm. In addition, 40% or 2 in 5 of LGBTQ plus identifying youth have seriously contemplated suicide within the last year, showing what one mental health expert called devastated mental health consequences of society's failure to create a safer and more affirming environment for America's queer youth. This is not occurring as a result of who these children were born as, but as a result of familial and societal projected violence and continual invalidation. So what are some ways that we can do within the school environment to potentially help save these children's lives? Well, for starters, something as simple as honoring and validating their identities and pronouns such as she, her, they, them, or he/him. It will show that student that they are valued and honored for who they are. And maybe the only time in their day, or in their time as a youth, excuse me, where they hear you are enough, you are valid, you are worthy, and you are who you were meant to be, whether it's just for today, for a week, or a year, or the rest of your life. Further on in the survey, it went on to note that 86% of these youth stated that one person who entered their life, who strongly supported them and validated their existence drastically reduced suicidal ideation, mental health struggles, and self-harm. One person can make that difference and that can be any one of us up here, on the stage, or back here, or within the school. We can be the difference between life and death for these youth by creating an environment of validation, acceptance, inclusion via our language and creating safe places for them to turn. I appreciate the efforts that have begun in the middle and high school levels in supporting our youth via QR state here signage in clubs such as GSA. If we could continue this momentum by bringing in educators who can help coach and guide our district leaders in implementing further supportive inclusive measures within the classroom, it can only help to further support our youth. In closing, I hope in doing so, our student body goes forth in life and continues to affect positive change within our own community and in the world as well, stemming the tide for future generations so that one day without question, all of our youth will know that they are enough.
Rebecca Hagel.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Hagel. My address is 602 Third Street here in Hudson. I'm here to read a comment of a community member because they're unable to be here because there is no option not to make a comment without being here in person with the COVID crisis. Hello, thank you for taking time to listen to our concerns and suggestions. My name is Elise Robida Dixon and my daughter is a seventh grade at the middle school. She is regularly told that she would look better if she straightened her hair and kids touch her hair all the time. A teacher has told her in her class that racism does not exist in Hudson. Additionally, my husband coached Hudson varsity football a few years and continues to train in the community. My husband is a black man and has talked to many former and current kids of color. The stories they share are very similar. They all have had experienced racism and discrimination within the schools and community. There is an overwhelming sense that they will not be believed or supported by adults. I am asking that there would be a set protocol and training on how to approach and address racial incidents. For example, my niece had issues at an elementary school in 2016. She loved school initially, but started to get very anxious at the thought of having to go to class. She tearfully admitted to her mother that she was being bullied for being black. A boy encouraged her classmates to ostracize her for the color of her skin at only five years old. She would sit alone at recess and was told no one wanted to sit with her because she was black. When my sister-in-law called her daughter's teacher, they were aware of the problem, yet my sister-in-law was never notified. Also, the school did not want to embarrass the family of the boy who was spewing racism and the situation was essentially brushed under the rug. It was devastating and humiliating to a five-year-old little girl. Needless to say, they left the school district. My daughter has stories of her own and it does not have to be this way. We can come together to bring education and standards in addressing racial injustices. This leads to my second point of the importance of education and representation within the schools. My family believes that Black history should be included in American history the entire year and should include Black educators and guest speakers. There are many local resources and speakers of African American history that we could benefit from partnering with. In addition, providing and supporting Black student unions or multicultural clubs at the high school and middle school would be valuable to both the students of color and Caucasian students. It would bring discussion and education in underserved areas and topics within the community. Thank you for serving the school district and striving for the best for all students. These are all relatively small changes that can have a large impact for the greater good of racial inclusion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Beth Newtonan. Beth Newtonan.
Okay, Beth Newtonan. I live at 335 Station Lane North. I'm a 24-year-plus resident of Hudson, mom of three alumni from Hudson High School, senior that graduated basically in March. And in my sixth year of the Hudson Girls Lacrosse Director and Coach of the High School Club Lacks Team, where I co-coach with an African-American woman who identifies as lesbian and is married to a woman, which is a phenomenal thing for these high school girls to see. I'm currently serving on the Hudson High School Teaching and Learning Advisory Council. It's a two-year commitment, you guys are probably well aware of it, but we were suspended, or suspended meetings last spring, hoping to resume soon. I stand before you tonight with great anticipation, a little bit of fear, and with really high hopes that together we can all figure out a way to help our students learn about historical, systemic racism, and the necessary language that they will need to become great adults and inclusive citizens. In the fall of 2016, you guys gave me this book. I don't know whose idea it was, but it was How to Raise an Adult. All freshman parents got it. I read it. There are so many pages that are dog-eared. I don't know if everybody else read it, but this is where I kind of want to challenge you guys. I think that the freshman class, well, let me back up. I talked to like six, I think it was six, former students, and they said when they got to college, one of the coolest things that happened is in Welcome Week, they were given a book about racism. One girl read Just Mercy, and she said that would be a phenomenal read for freshmen. We have that advisory time. I know I've supported a ton of advisory parties, sending in food. Maybe we could discuss the book, and maybe these kids could learn to have this language where it's okay to have different opinions, but to be kind and supportive to each other when things are there. Okay, I hear the buzzer, but I'm challenging Hudson to be proactive versus reactive and to be a leader in this. Let's make this change. Let's do this. Let's be the school district that everybody wants to emulate versus trying to catch up. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Carrie Reese. Carrie.
Hi, I'm Carrie Rice, 1470 Lee Circle in Hudson. I am the parent of two Korean-American adoptees and two biracial little boys, one of whom who is in the elementary system and the other one will be in five years. I am reminded tonight of a quote from James Baldwin, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." This is my second time sitting in on a board meeting, the first time making a comment. But the last time was last March, and I had the opportunity to listen to at least a portion of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, the school climate. And I see, I think you're there nodding your head. One of the things that surfaced in that survey, this was taken last year, and the kids, I think it was 2019, and the kids were telling us about their experiences. And two of the categories, there are several that were identified. You know, if any one child in our system is having emotional problems or pressure of any kind, it can lead to some pretty severe outcomes. I have a nephew that I lost to depression. So, you know, I think we all take these things very seriously, but two categories in particular, those kids who are students of color, LGBTQ+, and then we also had kids that had IEPs or Individual Education Programs, and those kids that are food insecure identify that they had more serious occurrences of bullying and basically didn't feel that they belonged. I think the group here is coming forward in part to say that we need to address this. We can't pretend it doesn't exist by pretending it goes away. The kids are telling us they want and need help. I don't think anyone in this room expects perfection or that we're going to leave here and suddenly, you know, all our problems are cured, but I'm asking to take a first step. Thank you.
Next up is Jennifer Miller.
I'm Jennifer Miller, and I live at 114 Under Berry Pass. I grew up in Hudson, and I am now raising my two children here. I work full-time at 3M, and I volunteer as a Girl Scout leader for both of my girls. And I chose to come in and speak today to request that you, our Board of Education, take visible actions to demonstrate your support for and proactively set an example for the community, for social justice, for celebrating diversity, and for encouraging inclusion in the Hudson community. I want my own children and all of our children, whether they are gay or strict, or Black or Brown or White, or Christian or Muslim, to know that when they come to our schools, they are valued and they are safe to be who they are when they come to our schools. I know that we have work to do. When I hear the kids tell each other, "I love you," no homo, and they don't see how that could be hurtful to their gay classmates. I know that we have work to do. When I hear the kids are being called the N-word by their classmates, I never once heard that as a child. We must make it clear that there is no room for hate here in Hudson. And I understand that we have an equity audit on the agenda later tonight, and I applaud that. So in the meantime, I ask that you listen, you learn, and you decide how to take visible steps to show our children and our families that they are all welcome at Hudson schools. Find specific and visible ways to celebrate diverse cultures all year long, hold empathy trainings for our staff, hire diverse staff across our schools, and partner with local communities like my employer to increase social equity in our community. And thanks for listening.
Thank you. Deanna DeBelle. Hopefully I got close in the pronunciation of that last name.
Hi, I'm Deanna DeBelle. I live at 882 Kingsway Road. I'm new to Hudson in the school district, but my son just started out in 4K this year. He's really enjoying that experience so far. But I have to admit that sending him off to school every day, I've had a lot of anxieties for him that I never had to have for myself. And so, as I'm listening tonight, I'm empathizing with a lot of the other moms who have spoken and where their hearts are. My own background is in school social work, and so when I was thinking about making a comment tonight, my mind initially went to talking about like the educational research that shows how supports the necessity for and the benefits of having equitable and anti-racist education systems and practices. But when I really sat down to think about and organize my thoughts, I realized that I just wanted to speak as a mom. So what I want to share with you are some of my hopes and expectations for what the next decade or so that my son will be in the Hudson School District will hold for him. My hope is that my son will come to school every day and experience a sense of belonging, and that he'll also exist in an environment that acknowledges and honors his differences, that he and his classmates will interact with curriculums that are rooted in truth and don't shy away from the complexity or the darkness of human, American, or even local histories, that the school staff will facilitate and model for students how to constructively engage in conversations about race, racism, and other potentially challenging topics, so that having those conversations becomes normalized, that he will learn from educators that resemble not only his mom's, but his dad's side of his family, that all of the teachers and staff he encounters will be encouraged to and supported in confronting bias, whether it's within themselves, within the classroom, within school systems, or within the broader community, that he and we as parents will feel confident that the adults at school are ready and equipped to advocate for him and with him should it be necessary. Those are just the few of the things that I hope for him and for his classmates. I thank you for considering the contents of the petition that was submitted to the Board and for recognizing that implementing anti-racist practices individually and systematically is a continuous and lifelong endeavor. I want to emphasize that these practices are just as critical to the learning of white students and all white classrooms as they are to students of color and multiracial classrooms, and that for schools to make these changes, the unwavering and public support of the school board is crucial, because we do know that there will be opposition to doing the right thing. All right, thank you.
Next, we have Kelsey Janetsky.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Janetsky. My address is 512 Fourth Street, Hudson, Wisconsin. I'm not fortunate enough to have children of my own, but stick with me, because people like me care and matter too. My statement today is about diversity and inclusion and the world that we're sending our children into, which is a remote one right now, and it's going to be forever. I work for a technology company remotely, and it was before I started with COVID. I'm a training manager in the company. It's in New York City. It's worth over $2 billion. And the company that I work for produces software that manages data. This matters, I'll get there, I promise. I train employees that are global, and having diversity, inclusion, understanding for them means that they're more effective in their jobs. This training that I design includes hard and soft skills, and I've spent the majority of my time since George Floyd was murdered, building diversity training for our employees because our American employees don't have the language they need to do their jobs. It's a huge problem, and it's something that I didn't think I'd ever have to do with my degree in adult learning. My husband and I chose Hudson because we wanted to raise our family here. We couldn't have lived anywhere in the country. I didn't know that Hudson would be struggling with this. I had hoped that the proximity to the Twin Cities would mean that we'd have a well-funded education system that would support this with open arms. I'm learning that that's not the case, and it's disappointing. I expect the children of Hudson and potentially mine in the future to lead with patience, empathy, and intellect. According to Drexel University, the importance of diversity in the classroom is, quote, "When working and learning with people from a variety of backgrounds and cultures present in the classroom, students gain a more comprehensive understanding of the subject matter." It also teaches students how to use their own strengths and points of view to contribute an enforcement working environment. I'm not really sure what is divisive about that, or why we have to come here and speak and support this, but I really hope that you'll see that this is a really important thing for our students regardless of what's happened in the world, and that we should have had it sooner. I'm almost done, I promise. As a professional, finding that those have had the opportunity to learn and experience more diverse viewpoints, have more successful employees, and make a higher wage, at at least 20% in my company alone, and I make over six figures, which as a person who graduated college two years ago with my master's degree is a huge number. In conclusion, I want Hudson to be the starting point of the success, and that's why I would like to see the addition of a diversity role to the district, in addition to culturally diverse curriculum, which includes history, English, and art. This affects all of our children. It matters now, including our graduating seniors, and I would like to see the changes improve the lives and futures of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker for public comment is Scott Ellingson.
Scott Ellingson. I live at 718 Sixth Street, and I'm a teacher, a parent, and an education leader in Hudson and the state of Wisconsin. I first want to say that I absolutely support our previous speakers and their efforts at diversity and inclusion, as does the National Education Association and the Hudson Education Associations. Thank you very much for your comments tonight. The Hudson Education Association continues to be in favor of in-person instruction done safely and equitably, as we have stated before. We are opposed to district changes in the HSD school closure metric that could make our schools and community less safe. Specifically, we are opposed to any increase in the 14-day county COVID rate thresholds for hybrid or virtual instruction. We are very concerned with the original metric that was adopted, and we are now extremely concerned with possible changes related to the county thresholds. We strongly urge you to reconsider changing the county thresholds. If you'd like, well, at a time when Wisconsin COVID numbers are skyrocketing, third in the country, along with St. Croix neighboring Pierce Counties, we believe it would not be prudent to make such a change at this time. The timing would not be good. We absolutely get and share that this desire to return to in-person instruction for all students. We share that desire. However, we believe that this desire needs to be tempered with concern for students, staff, and community safety. As St. Croix County's largest employer, it is our moral obligation to do our part in keeping its residents reasonably safe. The county case threshold in the district metric gives us a barometer that helps us gauge conditions by which storms could be brewing. It is a proactive tool that allows us to better prevent the potential damage done by a potential storm of COVID cases. Just like the weather, sometimes we get lucky and the storm blows over or dissipates. Other times, we are not so lucky. We urge you to err on the side of caution. Changing the county thresholds would put us all at more risk. The county rate thresholds are our strongest protection against uncontrolled COVID spread in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment portion of me. Next up is recognitions, and the Board will be recognizing an accomplishment of one of our own, Bob Bowman. Bob, would you stand? Congratulations, Bob. You have achieved a Level 1 in the WASBE Member Recognition Program. WASBE recognizes Board members for their efforts of leadership and board development through our Member Recognition Program. Points are awarded to school board members for their attendance at or involvement in various WASBE and National School Board Association programs and events. And it's always good when one of our members gets this recognition. They had a meeting, I think it was Thursday night, and you and Rob both attended that. So congratulations on attaining that level.
Thank you, Jamie. I'd just like to say that I have had a very good experience with the WASBE, whether it's online or in the regional meetings or state conventions. Jamie has been a big supporter of getting me involved in that and meeting Bill Ellingson's a pleasure, and I've had many conversations with him. And I have learned quite a lot from other board members I have met through those interactions, and you really get an idea of not just we're on an island here. There's, you know, many great people, many great educators, many great people involved with education. And I would also thank Sue for being my carpool friend, some of those, and keeping me up to date on online classes that she thinks I should be involved in, even if I already passed the law. But thank you. It's been a real positive, and I thank Jamie for your support.
Absolutely, Bob, and very, very good comments. I just share those as well, and I think every one of these board members would as well. We've got a lot of good viewpoints on this board, but I've had that blessing and that opportunity to attend. Here on the stage, at one another. So I think it is a great opportunity for bonding and for learning together and sharing experiences. But anyway, let's give Bob a round of applause. All right, then we move into the short portion of our meeting, the COVID-19 operational update. Turn it over to Dr. Ola.
Are you trying to say that I'm a little bit long-winded? Is that what you're meaning? Congratulations, Bob. Tim, if you can pull up the county report. Okay. Okay. And just got this not long before the meeting started, but this is something the county went over with us today at our call. If we go to slide number two, what they did is, the county dashboard, so as we were sitting today, there have been 1,302 cases of COVID-19 positive in St. Croix County, 557 active and 736 recovered. We did pick up a death over the last, over the last seven days. They did not let us know, you know, kind of the circumstances around that. There are currently eight people total hospitalized that are St. Croix County residents, six in the county, and two that are hospitalized outside of the county. One of the things, if you go to the next slide, Tim, is the daily new case, average daily new cases, as you can see, this is for St. Croix County again. The average has been, has been climbing, and we have had some, some pretty significant days. I think last Thursday, we had, or about a week or two ago, we had 41 in a day, and then over the weekend, we had a couple days of 39. So we've had some significant case increases, especially when you consider that, you know, we typically were running below 10 cases on any given day for a long time. The, the trend, or basically when they look at it per 100,000 population, daily confirmed cases per 100,000, they, they're looking at this, and on average, it's been, lately, it's been about 30 cases a day in St. Croix County, so that has climbed significantly. You can see, you can see on that chart, and I'll send the board a copy of this as well. One of the things that, you know, a lot of different places track is the trend of positive, percent positivity rate. Right now, the 70-day average in St. Croix County is 15.2%, so 15.2% of all COVID tests end up being positive right now. In St. Croix County, it's actually, you know, substantially higher than it's been, it's been in the past. They are testing more, but they are also having way more positives as a percentage of those tests as well. So where are the cases coming from? And so they just looked at the last month, where they think, where they think these cases are coming from. You can see that a large portion of the cases, they don't, they don't quite know where they're coming from. About 45% of the cases are either they don't have data on, or they haven't been able to determine whether a person may or may not have contacted, contracted COVID-19. Community acquired is, is accounting for about 1 in 5, and then close contacts, which primarily, you know, have been people that are interacting, you know, quite extensively with one another, is accounted for about 16% of all the cases. They did break down, when you look at the county, where are most of the cases? So if you go to the next slide, Tim, it shows that, you know, Hudson makes up 46% of the cases, which would make sense because we make up the largest portion population-wise of the county, and so you can kind of see where these different percentages are. I can tell you that I, you know, when I was looking at this about a month ago, Hudson was making up more, you know, a greater percentage of the cases, and actually Richmond started to grow as far as percentage of cases. You know, we have a lot of smaller communities in the county, and so you can kind of see where that, where that count is. But these are, these are not school district cases, these are, these are county-wide public cases. The next one, which is kind of interesting, because one of the challenges with COVID-19 is the information's always changing on us, and the target seems to be moving. So of all the cases in St. Croix County, 74% of them have been symptomatic. That only 9% of the cases have been asymptomatic cases, and then they hit, you know, 17% that they don't know. But, you know, there's a lot of question about, well, we could have potentially a lot of asymptomatic spread, because that, a lot of what we were hearing, especially early on, but from what their epidemiologist told us today, is actually in St. Croix County, most of our spread does happen when it is a symptomatic person spreading to, to others. It's, as we work through it. They did put in this last slide, and this is something you have access to on the Department of Health's website, there have been 1,465 deaths across the state of Wisconsin, of which you can kind of see how they, how they range in age and the different percentages of who makes up those different categories. And so this is just kind of a little bit of background data from a, you know, a high level before we start getting into some of our, our district level, district level data. Any questions about some of the county-level data or anything associated with that? Good. So a couple district data points that I want to hit on. So at the last board meeting, I talked about number of cases in each of the buildings, since the start of school, and also the number of close contacts. So since the start of school, so these would be cases that, that turned out to be positive since September 1st. We've had 25 cases at the high school, which has resulted in 178, approximately 178 close contacts. At the middle school, we've had a total of five cases at the middle school since the start of school, with a total close contact count of 60. And then at the elementarys, we have had a total of 17 cases in the six elementarys, with a total close contact count of about 104. So we've had roughly about 47 cases since the start of school in our buildings, and it's, it's accounted for 342 close contacts. And so just to give you an idea, close contacts, why is that number important is because when somebody's been identified as a close contact, they need to go home and quarantine for, for 14 days from the last contact with the positive individual. One of the challenges that we have as it relates to close contacts is, we are not saying that we have not had close contacts, that they've all tested negative. What we're saying is, of our 342 close contacts, we've had two test positive. There could be a large number of our close contacts that never do test, and so they sit out for the 14 days, it may run its course, they may be asymptomatic. However, the data that we're getting from St. Croix County would point to the contrary, that most people that, that are positive have been symptomatic. But it's one of the challenges that we're experiencing right now is, the majority of our, we have so many of these cases, you know, close contacts, and they're not ending up testing positive throughout those 14 days, and we're starting to experience now with our parents that are saying, "I want to continue to send my kid to school." They've already been, you know, and especially on some of these second case, you know, let's say they were labeled a close contact first time around, never ended up testing positive, then all of a sudden they're back at school for a couple weeks, they get labeled as a close contact again, and then getting sent home again for another 14 days. They're starting to push back on us a little bit, and it is creating challenges, it is a conversation that we're having with public health, because right now, everybody, close contacts are being treated the same way, whether two people were wearing a mask, whether there's plexiglass, it's just, all of our mitigation efforts, although I think are a great thing, and I think it's what's helping us keep the spread down in our buildings, they don't take those, those things into account when determining, you know, close contacts, which is a little bit disappointing. And as we've been talking with the county superintendents, we had a meeting today, it's been a pretty consistent message across all the districts that we're not seeing a lot of spread within the buildings, you know, or at least not a lot of positive cases as it relates to cases in the buildings, that most of the positive cases that are coming are because, you know, family members have been positive, or people are getting from outside of the, the building. So rarely, we really haven't seen where all of a sudden, you know, Johnny was positive, third hour English, and now the three kids that sit around him are all testing positive, or even one or two are tested positive, we're just, we're just not seeing that, or be even becoming symptomatic. So it is, it is a little bit of a challenge, and it is going to continue to be a challenge. And I know that public health has asked us to kind of continue to apply pressure to the state public health. There have been different states that have taken different approaches to this, some much more restrictive and some less restrictive as we work through it. So, but as we sit right now, right before the meeting, I counted up, we have five active cases in the high school, so we have five students that are actively out because they are positive for COVID-19 and are working through their, I should say, students or staff, that are working through their 10-day quarantine. There are two cases at the middle school, and there are currently 10 active cases in the six elementary schools as we, as we were sitting before the meeting. So questions kind of about some of our local data? Go ahead, Ed.
Nick, just one, one question clarification, because you just referenced back to it when you were speaking, that the county has said that most of those who are testing positive are symptomatic. I mean, I think the important part of that is, of those who are testing positive, that 7.9. I mean, the estimates I've seen for people who have COVID who are asymptomatic range from 20 to close to 70, I think the CDC says 40. So I think it's important, as we're discussing this later tonight, that we're not confusing the percentage of those who are tested positive who are asymptomatic with the percentage of folks who are positive who are asymptomatic, because that's really the crux of the extent to which our students and staff could be contributing to community spread without actually ever getting, getting, being symptomatic and therefore getting tested and finding out that they, that they have COVID. So I think it's a really important distinction, the numbers the county shared for the percentage of positives that were asymptomatic, but then this larger number or this different number, that's the percentage of people overall who have COVID and are asymptomatic.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that's the designation is, is really, we're not claiming that everybody that hasn't tested positive has tested negative, we're just, we're just saying they haven't tested positive. You know, one of the concerning numbers, we were kind of actually hoping to be higher as they did do the antibody testing in Wisconsin, and the study just came out, I think it was at the University of Wisconsin, they had tested several thousand people, anticipating that there would be a lot more people with the antibodies, and it was fewer than 2% of the population that actually had the antibodies, which we were kind of all hoping that it would be actually much higher, so that meant that more people had actually been exposed to it that were asymptomatic and, and carried those antibodies. Because I know there's been other studies, especially, I think it was out, Community of California, and it was UCLA, I think, that did the study, that they said they had 10 times more people test with the antibodies than they actually had positive tests or whatnot. And so it's, that's one of our biggest challenges right now, is we are getting data that is, it's, it's, there's almost nothing that's consistent, day to day, week to week, and how some of these things, you know, we're seeing, and I think we've all heard these stories where, you'll hear of a wedding, and 150 out of the 200 guests test positive, and then we've had folks in the district where they have a positive family member, and none of the other family members that are living in the same house with that family member end up testing positive, even though they've all been tested. And so it's like, it's, it's such a tough disease for us to track because it's, because of that exact thing. And so it definitely does create some, create some challenges.
Mr. President?
Yep.
Go ahead, Rob. Nick, you had mentioned some of our parents, perhaps some of our students pushing back on being quarantined for the second round, if you will. Have we had many students and/or parents resist sharing who their close contacts are?
I would say yes. That is, the other thing that is the fallout from this is people that are unwilling to share who their close contacts are, because they're not wanting their friends to have to quarantine, or coworkers, or things like that. And so that is a challenge in public health, is, is, you know, we're trying to work, we're trying to, you know, make sure to do the best we can, at least from a school perspective, but, you know, I think we feel pretty good about our mitigation strategies while kids are in our buildings, under our care, custody, and control. However, even as you see it, as maybe you're driving up, and kids are done with practice, and they're hanging out in the parking lot, waiting to for a ride and things like that, and hanging out, no mask, and just kind of talking, so it, it does create challenges. But, you know, we've had several instances where, yeah, parents would be refusing to pick up the phone when public health calls them, kids would say they haven't been around anybody in the last, you know, 10 days. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a, it's really a tough, a tough situation right now. And that's the thing that we've kind of worried about the whole time, is that you get to a point where people aren't willing, aren't willing to share the information, and that's kind of where we've tried to push back a little bit with public health, saying, hey, you know, with the close contact tracing, you know, maybe tighten it up a little bit and, and see what happens, and if we start to have flare-up, okay, loosen it up a little bit more. But the, the concern is, you know, as we continue to move forward, especially into the winter months, are we going to be able to get people to cooperate, cooperate with this as we move forward?
Any other questions on that point? Do you have more on COVID there?
Just a couple, a couple things to touch on. We're going to have, Dave's going to talk a little bit about our small group instruction changes whenever we do it at the elementary, and then kind of a little bit of a hybrid update.
Thank you. So Nick mentioned that when the county's looking at mitigation strategies and determining close contacts, what the, the, the strategies we have in place aren't always considered. And we've gone to great lengths to create an environment where we can, as much as possible, increase safety when delivering small group instruction at the elementary level, which is a really important element of what happens at the elementary level. However, we have found even with our mitigation strategies, which include the plexiglass dividers between all the students in a small group, and between the students and the teacher, and masks, of course, they're still determining close contact, and that creates some problems for us. So we'll be adjusting our small group instruction expectations, including duration, so how long a student would receive small group instruction, and also spacing. There's a lot to that. It sounds like, well, that should be a pretty easy thing to do, but it's not. It takes a, it takes a lot of work, a lot of collaboration, a lot of stakeholders involved. We met with principals, met with teaching and learning teams, we'll continue to revise that, and then roll out a new plan for small group instruction starting next week. And then speaking of new plans, I don't know if you've heard this, but we went into hybrid mode last week. So hybrid mode at the, at the secondary level was a tremendous challenge. Obviously, that takes a lot of work. Teachers in the building, principals did an outstanding job. The, the best part of that transition is that even though IDL was very challenging to start, it takes a lot, it's, you're, it's, it's like starting, it's like everyone's a brand-new teacher when you go into this world of teaching with distance learners and onsite learners at the same time. Very challenging, but teachers, they dug in, they worked hard, they persevered, and they learned a lot through that process. When we transitioned to hybrid, the primary change now is that instead of having 2, 3, 5, 6, we have about half of the students' distance learners and about half onsite. Although that does carry new challenges, there's also a lot of learning that transfers directly to what they're doing. And I would, if I would take all the feedback we've gathered, I'd boil it down to just a simple statement, it was very difficult, but it's doable. There are still specific challenges we need to address. Access is a continuing challenge that we will continue to address. If you think of IDL, the students that were in distance learning, at that point, they either chose to, their parents chose to, or they're quarantined or ordered to by the county. Now, this is the first time that we have a large portion of our students that are distance learners based on our metric, based on our decisions, so they may not necessarily be as looking forward to that, but the kids also did an amazing job. Families were very supportive, they were very patient, there was a lot of grace, working through continued challenges, but given as challenging as it is, and for as difficult as it could have been, I was pleasantly surprised, and I think everyone is doing a great job.
Questions for Dave? Okay. That's it? That's it for the COVID update? We're done, we're done in under an hour? All right? So, all right, next up on reports, curriculum presentation preview, back to Dave.
All right, thank you very much, and I'm going to invite Lisa Skoyen and Ivy Wheeler up as well, and they will be doing the, the bulk of the presenting, and I think if you'd asked them, they might say they've done the bulk of the work as well. They are incredible leaders, and I'll get to that in a little bit. So every year, we present, thank you, Tim, we have a series of presentations regarding curriculum and instruction, and we go through different content areas, and we update you on what's happening and, and what we're doing. Tonight, this is a preview of all of those presentations, and we're going to sort of share a roadmap as to what we'll be sharing throughout the year in these presentations. A few weeks ago, I offered a quick overview of the curriculum improvement process, and the curriculum improvement process, or CIP as we call it, is, I think, the most crucial system we have in teaching and learning. When we want to create system we have in teaching and learning. When we want to create systemic change, we do that in curriculum, we do that through the Curriculum Improvement Process. It's what guides all of our work with all of our teams. Thank you, Timbs. All right. So the Curriculum Improvement Process, again, absolutely critical. And before we get into any details, I just want to recognize the community members that came to speak tonight. I think some of the things they were talking about and some of the details that were shared in the petition that was shared are either directly or indirectly addressed in what we'll be talking about tonight. And it is by no means a comprehensive answer to the concerns. Obviously, the concerns, they're big concerns and they require a lot of conversation, a lot of dialogue, and a lot of really difficult work to dig in and make, again, systemic changes. But tonight, we're going to, we're going to share not only what our curricular areas are, which curricular areas will be addressed in which month, we're also going to share some improvements to the Curriculum Improvement Process. So if you could switch to the next slide, please. Thank you. For the past two years, you've been hearing us talk a lot about consistency and clarity. Those were two themes that drove our work for the previous few years. We found in our analysis that we weren't quite as consistent as we'd want to be with the delivery of our curriculum across all levels. And we recognize that that's a challenge for teaching and learning. That's our responsibility to provide the clarity that allows for that consistency. Teachers have responded wonderfully. So we have cleaned up our processes, we've made sure that the product that we put out is clearly understandable and everyone... Tonight, we're going to share three new themes that will be guiding our improvement to the Curriculum Improvement Process. The three themes are equity, alignment, and empowerment. When we talk about equity as it relates to curriculum, we're talking about ensuring that all students have access to rigorous learning experiences, that they see themselves in the curriculum on a daily basis, and that we're doing our best to remove barriers for potentially underserved students. When we talk about alignment, we're dealing with ensuring that our systems keep us all aimed in the same direction. And empowerment deals with engaging stakeholders to ensure that their voices are heard and valued as we improve our curriculum. Beth Newton was one of the speakers, and she's part of our Teaching and Learning Advisory Council. And as she said, we had to take a break from our work, obviously, because of the pandemic. But the work that we share tonight will also be shared with them. They will engage with it. That's an example of empowerment. How can we make sure that those voices are brought to the table?
So that's what you're going to be hearing about tonight as Lisa and Ivy present. So Lisa is the Assistant Director for Elementary Teaching and Learning, and Ivy Wheeler is the Assistant Director for Secondary Teaching and Learning. This is another example of alignment. By restructuring our department, we're able to provide more direct service to teachers, to administrators, to make sure that we're keeping things moving forward. I cannot overstate how impactful these two leaders are. They're absolutely amazing. They stepped in to take this job in the middle of a pandemic. That's a daunting task.
Everything is upended.
Meeting we had together was, hey, let's design three brand-new instructional models for the district before you've even really started on the job. Ivy was moving from Cleveland during all this, and we're still making this happen. And then not only that, they contributed at an amazingly high level to share the work that we're bringing tonight. Their focus on equity, alignment, and empowerment is what's driving the system. Couldn't be more proud of the work they're doing. And with that, I will turn it over to Lisa and Ivy.
Okay. So as Dave said, we are focusing on these three themes this year in the work that we're doing. And the first one that we're looking at is equity. For each of the three themes, we have, can you take it to the next slide, please? Thank you. For each of these three themes, we have developed some questions that will be guiding our work this year. One example is, the first question on equity, how do we embed equity work in the Curriculum Improvement Process? And one way that that question is already driving the work we do is that this year, when we start to look at new resources for science, we will be developing and utilizing a rubric that includes an equity lens when we are evaluating possible resources so that we can ensure that the resources we choose are able to support equitable outcomes for all of our learners. Next slide, please. The next theme is empowerment, and we have chosen these three questions to ask ourselves to ensure that students are able to be empowered in their own learning, that all stakeholders hear their voices reflected in the work that we're doing, and that also we are capitalizing on the expertise of all of our teachers by empowering them in this work. And then Lisa is going to talk about alignment.
Yes, our final theme is alignment.
Oh, you got it.
Have it be up.
It just needs to be up.
It is.
Okay.
There we go. Is that better?
Yes. Maybe take your mask off when you're talking to the mic because it's kind of...
There we go. All right. The final theme is alignment. Ivy and I will work closely as an elementary and secondary team to ensure our pre-K through 12 curriculum is aligned with our beliefs, best practices, and standards. We will also check for vertical alignment in our curriculum to make sure the learning is coherent and follows a logical process as a student progresses through grades pre-K through 12. Now, we just shared three themes that will guide our work and be embedded in the Curriculum Improvement Process. This year, we will be presenting curricular areas by phase. This slide shows the curricular area phase for the 2021 school year and the date we will report progress. As you can see, K-12 art, K-5 science, and K-12 music are in Phase One, desired results. Phase One is where we assess program effectiveness by reviewing data, establishing common beliefs, and prioritizing standards. Outcomes for Phase Two include defining proficiency and evidence of understanding. In this phase, we also offer professional learning related to assessment literacy and create selection criteria for resources and materials. In Phase Three, we identify best practices and develop instructional units that include learning experiences and assessment for learning. One of the highlights of this phase is the evaluation and selection of resources and materials.
Moving on to Phase Four, this is where we implement and reflect. After the first three years of developing the plan, aligning it to standards, and eventually identifying the resources that will be used, Phase Four is the first year of full implementation. During this time, as we implement, we also monitor the, monitor and evaluate the program for effectiveness and reflect and consider possible adjustments that we might need to make. Then in Phase Five, we continue to reflect and we begin to make those revisions. We adjust professional development based on feedback and data and refine the practices to support our students. Finally, in Phase Six, we continue reflecting, and here we begin to investigate. We look at current best practices and also content exploration as we prepare to go back into Phase One the following year.
Excellent. And just to wrap things up too, as we share each presentation, we'll also be providing an update in regards to our work with those three themes of equity, empowerment, and alignment. That will also be part of the monthly updates. Questions?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Sue.
Oh, yeah. Thank you very much for your work on this. And I already sent a note to David that should go to you on the equity statement. And the third bullet is amazingly and most important, and I'm sure you heard that in some of the voices that spoke tonight, the idea that we see ourselves. That is like sweetness to my ears to hear that statement in there. I never thought in my several years here I'd ever hear something like that, but I just got to tell you, that's just pure gold and so important. And it tells me that people in teaching and learning get it. So thank you very much for, especially for that particular bullet. Okay, so I don't want to run on too much here, but I was wondering about the differences between, let's see, was this under which, oh yeah, alignment. What do you see as the difference between belief, beliefs and values? I looked, looked it up online, but I'm not sure how that fits into this curricular planning, if you would comment on that.
Sure. And I'll jump into that one. It's a very good question because there are subtle differences. When we talk about beliefs, we're talking, I think, a little more focused to our curricular work where values are, we tend to be connected to our vision and our mission. So we look at those values. What do we value as a district? And then how does that translate to beliefs which are a little bit more tangible and actionable? But both very important.
Okay. Other questions of board members?
Mr. President?
Oh, Heather had her hand.
That's fine.
Go ahead, Heather.
Mr. President and team, I guess, thanks so much. So I see the cycle, and I feel like I remember, Dave, possibly at our last meeting, mentioning that that's also about how our resources are budgeted. I think you mentioned Phase Three is where we look at selecting and purchasing curriculum and that we're budgeted to replace curriculum about every six years. So it looks to me like then, this year, we would be looking to replace or update our science curriculum, for instance. And then next year, because social studies is currently in Phase Two, next year would be the time that we would be looking at that. I know there was one speaker this morning who talked about, as an example, that they would like to see information about sexuality and gender incorporated into the health curriculum, for instance. So would it be accurate then that because PE and health is in Phase Four, it would be six years before you would see changes reflected in the curriculum? Or how, how does that work if there are some changes that, as a team, you know, as you're doing the reflect and revise, you realize, oh, there's really something that we do need to change here, but we just got new curriculum last year? If you could speak a little bit to how that process might work?
Sure. And I'll take that one as well. And I'm sure they could provide a very accurate answer. But there's some subtle distinctions. First of all, resources do not equal curriculum. There's so much more to curriculum than the resource. So although it's true, we would not be able to purchase a large-scale resource, K-12, out of cycle because the budget just wouldn't allow that, that's when we get into that reflect and revise, reflect and adjust. We're constantly updating and tweaking the curriculum and the instruction that is connected to that. So there's no reason, we can act nimbly, we can make quick adjustments when necessary, but we need to make sure that we do that without essentially violating one of those themes of alignment. What we don't want to do is say, you know, oh, look, there's a brand-new math resource, and it looks pretty interesting, and a few of the districts across the state have used it, so let's quickly adopt that. But adjusting, back to Sue's question, to our values and beliefs, that's something we can do. We would engage the content area teams. They're still meeting. Now, meeting this year is a little bit different, so some of our processes are a little more slow than they typically would be. But that's how we would address those sorts of things.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Bruce.
So, you know, just curious to kind of understand. So Phase One, desired results, I like, you know, beginning with the end in mind. So, you know, we're putting out, like, what are we hoping to achieve here ultimately? What sort of work do you intend to do as part of that? Like, looking at best practices, what have other districts done? What have best practices been in, you know, areas that, you know, districts have really excelled in this? So just curious, maybe what will happen in that phase and maybe what's happened so far in terms of understanding what or how we're going to land on those desired results?
I can speak to that. Working with the Social Studies Committee last year, part of Phase One is looking at our data. And we did also look at some of our comparable districts or the districts that we look at and reviewing our data compared to theirs. We have, and looking also, what are they using as resources? We have build-your-own-curriculum. And so a district has that also used as build-your-own-curriculum, where they house all of the curricular resources in there. We can look to see what they're using in their district as well. You asked what some of the, some of the products of Phase One would be developing norms, establishing our beliefs, reviewing data, prioritizing standards, deconstructing those standards, and just getting a really good grip as to what that standard asks and what, if it's something that's a priority to us based on our beliefs.
Thank you. Other questions? Anyone else? Otherwise, Dave, I know that there were already some questions from board members about specifics, but we heard a few speakers tonight speaking about things maybe like the Holocaust and so forth. And I know that that's been taught because my kids didn't learn about that here. I mean, what, you might be able to talk about how this improvement in the process might be addressing some of those concerns?
Yep, absolutely. And Ivy mentioned one of the things that, that we'll be addressing. And that is measures that we could, can put in place to make sure that we're living up to our expectations and goals. So a rubric, as an example, would be a tool that we would create. And we would make sure that we would, in each of these rubrics, whether we're looking at, there would be rubrics by phase, there'd be rubrics by process. As an example, equity work is multi-dimensional. There's not, there's not one way to address equity. But by applying an equity lens, we need to understand what the ideal state is. So put that in a rubric, find out where we are by actually digging in and analyzing our current practices and then seeing how we can move on that continuum. It's never, or very rarely, a matter of not doing something at all or doing something perfectly. It's continual, continuous improvement. And that's why we don't have a six-year process that is, let's wait six years and at the beginning of the year, decide what we'll buy at the end of the year. We're engaging these teams throughout the process to make sure that we're learning not only from, as Bruce suggested, from other districts, which is incredibly important, but also learning from the teachers in the classroom, learning from the experiences that students have, learning from families. And that's where that empowerment comes in. We have not historically done a very good job of engaging stakeholders and finding out, how are you experiencing this curriculum? What does it feel like for you as a parent, as a student, as a community? We're going to be much more deliberate about that, and that would be a way we can keep that reflective cycle moving forward.
Excellent. All right. Anything else for our presenters? Otherwise, thank you very much for your work and very important work. And thank you for explaining it here and presenting it to the board.
Mr. President, can I just ask one more follow-up question?
Sure.
Kind of playing off of what you, what you just said, Tim. So there were several folks who spoke tonight who specifically did speak about curricular concerns or suggestions for curriculum. I know one of them mentioned that she serves on the Curricular Advisory Council. I'm forgetting the right phrase for it. But, so for folks who do want to share feedback, do want to get involved, what's the best way for parents to share concerns, suggestions, thoughts about that, either informally or if they want to get involved with some sort of committee that already, because we already have committees that engage parents in quite a few different ways? How, how can they plug in and become part of that process?
So with our theme of empowerment, when we're looking at that guiding question of how do we empower students to, sorry, how do we empower students, staff, and families to have their voices heard in the Curriculum Improvement Process? So that's the question that we're asking. And then the types of opportunities that you're speaking to would be our answer to that question. So we've already talked about some existing surveys that we have in the district and the possibility of utilizing those or building on those to get that type of feedback from stakeholders. But then also, I know for myself personally, as we move through this process, I'm very much open to hearing from people and having that open dialogue and those continued discussions. So I don't think that we have the exact answers to that right now, but that's the exact type of work that we're looking to do by reflecting on these questions.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie?
I guess in specific response to that question or to your answer, for the surveys that go out, would you be seeking stakeholders' input on what those questions might be? on what those questions might be?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think that's a really good point. And I think we maybe heard some of that today, that we might not know some of what's happening because we haven't asked the right questions to find out. And that if we ask the right questions in the right ways, that we can have a better idea of the needs of our community, of our students and our families that we might not actually be aware of at this point.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I just have one more kind of compliment, really. Under empowerment, the last bullet on leveraging, I love this too, leveraging the teachers and specialists, leveraging their expertise to connect students to the curriculum. And I just know we have a goldmine of experience and expertise in our teachers and some of the staff sitting here. And let's just mine them. You know, I found out Andrea worked as a lawyer for, it sounds like, the Good Fight program I watch on television. But she worked for an all-black firm in Flint, Michigan. Now, I just bow and scrape in front of her because I think she must know an awful lot or learned a lot. So, I mean, I just think our teachers and staff and advisory committees are just gold mines, so.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Just one quick thing. And our work in teaching and learning now is inextricably linked to the work in student services. So, when we talk about learning support services, we're taking some serious strides to operationalize that and not just have it be a concept that, yes, we like to collaborate. We're making decisions together. Erin and I have a meeting scheduled later this week to make sure that we're embedding the work that relates to student services, whether that be additional programming or meeting the needs of individual students, making sure that's embedded in the curriculum improvement process. So, I really appreciate Erin's partnership on that work as well.
Excellent. Good to see, we have teamwork going, all right. With that, thank you very much for your report. And I guess I'll turn it over to Tim Erickson for our 2020, 2021 budget update.
Okay, a quick, really brief overview of the changes so far before we, before we go into the adoption of the budget coming up. On the 15th, on the 15th is the release of the aid numbers. It'll be, that will be one of our major pieces of the puzzle that's finally put together here.
When is that coming out?
And that's October 15th. And we'll also have the district valuations, which should hold pretty close to what we've seen in the county. So, we'll have those two numbers coming out. As we've talked about a little bit before, because of the underspend, depending on where other districts wind up, we could, we could see an increase in state aid. But, you know, it's one of those things where we're going to have to wait until the state gives us the number. So, getting on, excuse me, getting on to some of the changes. Open enrollment in, that was an increase. We saw our numbers go up, we saw that last membership report, the September count. So, that's been adjusted to reflect that. That's up about $200,000. And per pupil state aid is down about $60,000. That's line 691. And then, if we look at the other side of that, under the expenses for open enrollment out, of course, we saw our numbers go up there, so that has been adjusted to reflect that as well. When we get down into, we had some additional 4K provider payments based on the numbers where 4K came in with our community partners. That was adjusted up. So, when you get down to the net effect of that, get down to the general fund surplus or deficit, that's up about five, roughly $500,000. If we project that down, just going down to the bottom of the page, that puts the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures at 31.36. As we'd be covering that $1.6 million deficit with fund balance at this point, that is assuming that you would not change that. So, that mil rate remains the same at 1036. So, it's about a three and a half percent increase.
999.
Oh, I'm sorry, 999, going from 1036 to 999. Thank you. So, then, rolling on unless there are questions, we'll roll on to the next segment. The next thing that we've been looking at right now is Nutrition Services Program. We've had quite a decrease in participation rates. And you can see, see those across on that chart. Excuse me. Total decrease in the number of meals served down in that last column is about, well, lunch is 26.45% down, breakfast is 33.39%. When we start, when we looked at that first month of operation under this new school year, we're running a deficit in that account. And so, we need to make some adjustments to that, to our staffing. We're looking at different ways to reduce costs. We're looking at ways to increase participation. So, I'm going to go down to the next page, Tim. And we'll talk through some of that. When we look at staff reductions, this is our plan to go forward with that. We have, we have on hold the hiring of a supervisor position that will not be filled. We would reduce one of the positions at Willow River. Our numbers are down quite a bit there at Willow. Same with middle school, so we'll be reducing middle school down. High school, we have the Elements, the satellite survey, it's called Elements. That was opened with the new construction. Right now, based on those participation numbers, we're planning to temporarily close Elements down and move the popular items, the most popular items, over to the main survey. And that'll create some efficiency for us as well. We'll also hold on hiring three positions that are open right now. And we will, at the main survey, called the Blue Bistro, we will reduce ours by four and a quarter there. We're also looking for reductions, voluntary reductions, on Wednesdays at the high school. The two-hour early out is really, when we look at participation, it's gone way down. The last, excuse me, I have to lubricate here. The, the, their participation is down. When we look at the, the number of kids that are eating on Wednesdays with the early out because the, the early out is in alignment with the last lunch of the day. So, we've had a, we've had a pretty big reduction there in number of kids eating. So, looking at getting four, four, four and a quarter hour per day positions and a voluntary reduction of staff would volunteer to, not to report on those Wednesdays. So, that's, that's our plan for staffing. Again, we're looking at some marketing pieces. We need to continue to make parents aware of the free meal program. And the good news we got on that today is that that has been extended by the USDA. So, that will be, they thought they would only have money to run that until December. And they've been able to, they're now saying they're going to fund that for schools through June 30th. So, you know, so that's good news. You know, we'll, but we'll continue to market that, get that information out there. I know we send emails out, but not everybody maybe reads those. And some, we know, we're hearing that some people are not aware of that. I had a department meeting with Nutrition Services today. We went through a lot of this information with them and the reasons why we need to make changes. They're, they're very good. We also asked them to put forward ideas because they're working on the front line, so to speak. And a lot of those good ideas are going to come from there and how we can continue to reduce costs and improve the participation in the program. This is not, this is certainly not solely a Hudson issue. It is, is across the state. I've talked to some of my other colleagues and they're having the same issues. Participation rates are low. And that's, you know, certainly to be expected with the concerns of coronavirus. But we'll continue to, to make the changes going forward here and as we monitor it on a monthly basis, so. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
So, Tim, before COVID, we had our Free and Reduced Program. And I know in Hudson, you know, it's, we're fortunate to be, you know, a wealthy district, but we still had students participate. With the federal government's nutrition program where there's free meals for everybody, families aren't required now to fill out that application. Is that right, for the free meal now?
We're, we would still want them to fill out that application.
But are they?
I don't believe, I don't, I want to say, I don't believe they are right now.
Is that going to hurt us?
However, no, no, it won't hurt us. No, the reason that we asked parents to fill it out before, when we sent out, sent out the communication on it, is that if, it was under the assumption that USDA was only going to continue that program until December. And therefore, if, then people would be racing and they wouldn't be prepared to move over to the free and, free and reduced lunch once they ran out of money, once USDA ran out of money.
Okay. And do we have an idea how many families are participating in that free meal program today, roughly?
We had, I want to say, we had about eight. This is going to be a little bit different because of the switch over to the hybrid learning model. So, we had about eight, I think we served about 800 meals on Thursday, last Thursday. But we're, we're kind of expecting that that may go up a little bit, too. Again, it's, it's getting the word out there. We're hearing that some parents still don't know about this. So, we want to, want to try to remind them and send out another reminder. And I know parents are inundated with information, so we're trying, kind of trying to balance that out and be a little bit careful. But I think we're going to see that number go up.
Any other questions for Tim?
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Will there be flexible staffing with the hybrid model in place?
So, yeah, so when we're looking at that, one of the things that we wanted to do is make sure that we've got enough staffing, if we go back face-to-face. I mean, we could come in and out of this over a period of time. It's pretty tough for us to predict that. But most of the positions, we have three that would be, that would be laid off right now. And they're four to four and a quarter hour positions. The rest of them are, are hourly reductions. They may be reduced by an hour or a half hour. What we're trying to do there is not have, have cuts of whole positions. It minimally impacts the employee that way. And it also gives us greater depth. So, if we go back and forth between this, we're staffed and we can handle that. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but, yep.
Any other questions for Tim? With these developments, we're still anticipating before our work session later this month, will you be able to share that number with the board shortly after it's reviewed by the team?
Yes, yeah.
That would be, I'm referring to the state aid.
The state, yeah, that's what I thought you were, yeah.
And the...
And the property values.
Yes, property valuation, thank you. All right. Great, well, moving on, then we can move to our action item on our agenda. And I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda items.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
Move approval of the consent items and that the Chief Financial and Operations Officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $972,182.39.
Second.
Motion by Rob, second by Bob. Any, I hear in, there is no discussion, this consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, consent agenda is, consent items are approved.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Real quick, our first retirement of the year, I want to announce. Mary Gersmull has been with the district 23 years. She's the Administrative Assistant at EP Rock. And so, she's announced that it'll be effective the end of June. So, giving us lots of notice so we can start planning and going forward. So, Mary Gersmull, 23 years.
All right, congratulations, Mary. She's a friend of ours, fellow church member. But hopefully, crossing my fingers, that we have the opportunity to have a banquet for all of our retirees like we normally do. I really miss that last spring because it's, it's a really good time to celebrate education, loyalty to the community and longevity, which is something I appreciate every year I get older. All right, Sue, did you have something?
I just wanted to say, I was greeted by Mary every time I'd go over and be a mentor at EP Rock. And she's just a very upbeat person. And I, and in our chats, I know outside of her work, she is, you know, contributing a lot to others, so.
Yes, all right. Thank you to Mary and to the others that are contemplating retirement for the end of the year. So, moving on to the equity proposals, I'm going to turn it over to Nick because I think we have some, three sub items and then a recommendation from administration.
Yes, that's correct. So, what I, what I have for you tonight is, you know, equity obviously has been on the forefront. We started talking about equity work way back, I think, in January. Sue and I and Jamie and Erin had met in Erin's office looking at our Youth Risk Behavior Survey and starting to have those conversations that way. And...
May I say, we spoke more specifically about LGBTQ.
Yes.
That was a specific topic that the four of us spoke about.
Yes, absolutely. And, and so, you know, as we've kind of progressed and as the board has looked at, and I definitely would concur, it's something that we want to really emphasize. And it's something that we want to do and we want to do right. And we don't want to just give lip service to. And so, I think, you know, the board did start down the path with doing a book study with White Fragility. But again, that was just kind of more of a, kind of getting people to the same page and giving, you know, having the conversation. Really, what was, we're looking at is, okay, where do we start? Where do we look at, where we're, you know, what is our current situation? Where do we start and then where do we go from here? In talking with, you know, different, different folks from different school districts, talking with different folks from different consultants, I was given the names of these, these different consultants to look at as it relates to equity audits. And so, as we kind of had these conversations, one of the things that came out loud and clear is you have to know where you're starting. And, and it can't just be do a survey and call it good. I mean, there has to be a really thorough understanding of what is the current state in the organization. And so, that's when, you know, we started to have the conversations and started to look at, okay, what does that look like? And that's where the equity audit piece comes into play. And so, there's, there's actually three different organizations here, two of which that have provided proposals for equity audits, one of which I'm going to talk about, the third one I'm going to talk about separately. But really, what it is, is wanting to look at, not only, yes, survey piece and the quantitative piece is part of it, but also looking at the qualitative piece, which is focus groups with our kids, with our staff, with our parents, with our community, and really trying to understand what is, where are we at in the district? And looking at it through a variety of different lenses and different groups and different representations. So, as I went through and had conversations with both of these groups, both Adjusted Equity Solutions and Integrated Comprehensive Systems for Equity, one of the things that they said, both groups were, you know, what their work does with the equity audit is, it does give us that, that current state of the district, but then also then, it is the leaping off point or the springboard of what is our long-term plan. All three organizations said that, you know, really having a long-term plan will, will get you to the point where you're having systemic change, not just maybe superficial level change. We did talk about equity coordinators and their roles that would be involved in some of this and what that could potentially look like down the road. And I know you guys have heard me mention that at different board meetings as well. But as we look at this, what I want to draw your attention to is, I did put them all in here, is I believe that the Integrated Comprehensive Systems for Equity, their proposal for an audit seems to be on target. I did do the reference checks on them, well-respected by the districts that they've worked with. It, they have, they have a background in doing the focus groups, doing the qualitative part, not just the quantitative part. The thing I was a little bit taken aback by Adjusted Equity Solutions, although they do work with large districts like Bloomington and White Bear and, and some of the other districts on the other side of the river. A lot of their focus is really on survey data. I mean, it really is just survey and qualitative. And then, if you want to really dig down, you know, those are additional services. And I think what I was hearing from folks as I talked to different folks, both in our... as I talked to different folks, both in our community and abroad, was you really got to have conversations. You got to have conversations, you really got to dig into more of the qualitative data, and start to understand people's experiences as we heard tonight from all of our speakers. Great Lakes Equity Center is the other piece that I wanted to talk about, because this group I was, you know, kind of connected with, working with a gentleman, Jay Marks, out of Detroit, and, you know, he had referenced this group, and this group is, is actually Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Centers, the actual group that we'd be working with underneath the, the Great Lakes Equity Center. And what they actually specialize in is not necessarily the audit per se, but more of the, after the audit work, you know, the training of staff, the, the constant, you know, review of, of what we're doing, and making sure that we're keeping our foot on the gas after we have, you know, gotten that feedback from, from an equity audit. And I thought what was interesting about them, and I spent some time talking with them, is, you know, they were founded, they're founded and funded based on 1964 desegregation legislation. They're based out of Indiana University, and they are a nonprofit, and they handle the 13 state regions, called the Great Lakes Region, and there's these consortiums that are set up across the country, they just happen to handle the Great Lakes and, and the plains states as we went through it. And we spent quite a bit of time talking, you know, about what that looks like, and they talk about tier one interventions, they talk about tier two interventions, and tier three, or, sorry, not interventions, here I've, I've been in this mode, education mode, it's tier one partnerships, tier two partnerships, and tier three partnerships. And, you know, tier one partnerships, they talked about, their website has a lot of different resources that are free, that you can access, and, and you can work on, and, you know, you can download, and, and they just said, you know, they're free to anybody, you don't have to be a partner, just, they asked that you would cite them as where you got the resources. The tier two type of partnership is where we're actually sending staff away to trainings, or we're doing different types of virtual trainings and things like that. But the tier three partnership, and this is where we spent quite a bit of time talking about, is, is a long-term partnership with this organization, where they would actually send people with expertise to train our staff, and not just train one or two staff members, but really train our staff on an ongoing basis, at different times throughout the year, and year after year, so that we can keep equity in the forefront of what we're doing, and, in, in working through some of these, some of these different things. And so, so that, that Great Lakes Equity Center, or the, the Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Center is under that umbrella, they're really kind of that post-audit group. So, they're the group that would do the work and work with us, and potentially work with an equity coordinator, or, you know, if that's a direction we end up going post, you know, equity audit and things like that, to really, you know, actually make the work come to life and make it actually happen in the Hudson School District. And so, like I said, so the ministry, the, the recommendation that I'm giving you is that I believe that we need to start with an equity audit, I believe that we need to start with it as soon as possible. I did originally, when I had talked to them, they said that it might take five, six, seven months to put this thing together, so that seems like a really long time. If you see in their proposal, I think they address it in one of the first couple paragraphs of the proposal, if not, I'm confusing it with an email that they sent me, but originally, they, they thought that it would be May by the time we'd get our final audit, and now they, they believe that, you know, if we can embrace, you know, if we can approve this and move forward with it, they could have something done, maybe end of December, first part of January, to really start the work, so we're not, you know, delayed in, in some of these things. There is a substantial price tag on any of this work. However, I believe it's important enough that that's, that's a focus, and I think the board has made that commitment, that it needs to be a focus in our district, and that we would continue, continue to look at that as we, as we continue to build, to, to move forward. Now, some people might say, well, Nick, are you recommending, are you recommending that group? Because they happen to be less expensive than the other group. No, the biggest reason why I'm recommending that group has to do with their work with focus groups more so than the other group, and really starting to dig into more of the qualitative data. So, so as I said, that would be my recommendation, that we would start by moving forward with, with this consultant as soon as possible, and then from there, getting our final report, and then working with them, and working with the Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Center to start our, our staff development, and start looking at, okay, what are some areas that we are challenged or need improvement in, and what are the best strategies that are going to be most impactful in serving our kids and our community? So, questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Okay, I heard Rob first.
You did, okay.
So, Nick, with regards to the proposals, I mean, first off, I got to commend you on, you know, the work that you did pulling this together. I mean, as a 50-year-old white male, I can honestly tell you and everybody here that I am completely ignorant to all this, you know, so thanks for that, for all the work. As it relates to the proposals that we have in front of us, is there going to be an opportunity for our community to, whether it's before we hire them, or early after we hire them, to make sure we capture their voices, so they understand what the scope of work is? Is it addressing their needs from their perspective?
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, one of the things, if you look at letter F, which is task and fees associated with this proposal, it talks about focus groups, four different community focus groups that they want to host, and, and bring people together, and then, and work on those, those different components. So, that, I, I don't know if that's what you're asking, or...
I'd just like to make sure that we're engaging, you know, the, the public that is feeling this need, you know, that they're part of the process, that they're part of the process early, so that we, as a community, walk together versus doing this as a school district, and perhaps completely missing the mark.
Absolutely. And, you know, and I think the, the piece that led me to both of these groups is the fact that this is what they do. And, you know, what was interesting is I, as I talked to the woman today from Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Center, she said, however, you know, we bring expertise with us, we're not necessarily always the experts in everything. And so, it is a collaborative effort with the community, with the school district, in, in working through the stuff. And so, yeah, they won't just kind of come in and say, here it is, this is a cookie cutter approach, it is more kind of build it as you go, and work with us to kind of build as you go, and it involves a lot of community involvement as we work through that. Go ahead, Sue.
Oh, I have several, but I'll contain myself. How did, first question is, Nick, how, how did you come up with these three companies? I mean, what was your process? Did you query other school districts, or your superintendent organization, or?
Yep, you know, I talked to other school districts, I also, one of the individuals that actually turned me towards the, the third group, Tracy's connection with, with the individual, he was going to be keynote speaker at Whisperer, is that right, Tracy?
Jay Marks.
Jay Marks, yep, and, and he really said, this is a group that he's worked tremendous amount with, the Great Lakes Equity Partnership, and so, and then looking and doing kind of reference checks on these groups. And, and the group out of Minnesota, the first group, is, is very reputable too, they've done a ton of work with Minnesota districts and things along those lines as well.
I looked all three of them up, and what would have been helpful to me tonight, instead of just sort of going to the process, would have been to possibly, and maybe you can still do this, is to share with us the, the part on their website that talks about them, what their, what they value, and, and their mission, and, you know, the, the way that they're, they would perceive during this kind of equity probe and so on. I, I just feel like we need more choices than these three.
Okay.
And the first one sounded really good to me, but I think you should also check out some of the conflict that they've had politically, just to make sure we, we are, you know, not going to get embroiled in anything we don't want to get embroiled in. But I would like more choices than these three. And I know we want to move along quickly, on the one hand, and I'm supportive of an equity audit, but I just think we need to come back and make sure that we're not going to lose the really important input from the grassroots here. This is what we were talking about with the curriculum, and I think tonight, the voices that we heard, we need to hear the voices of, of actual teachers and advisors to, to some of the groups that do have some element of, of diversity to them and so on. I, I don't know, I just am feeling like I'm missing the component that begins with us. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce.
So, first of all, I just want to say I support the equity audit, I, I think it's a, a good step forward. I think it's good to get an understanding of where we're at, so 100% beyond that. Curious if you had any conversations with these companies about, you know, the ongoing work that needs to be done? Certainly, there is the effort, you know, for training, you know, coming back to this again and again. Is this a, a one-year audit process, is it a two-year, is it a, do we come back and audit after we've implemented? Maybe just talk to me what they, what they described, you know, for budgeting purposes, you know, is this a two-year budget where we need to look at this, three-year budget purpose? Maybe, anything there would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely, so this isn't a one-year thing, and this isn't a kind of a one-year and done. You know, the audit, so, kind of this, this first step is the audit piece, it's, it's determining what is our current state, is something that then kind of determines where do we go from here. But it's, the audit is kind of a one-time thing that happens, however, it's the training pieces, and it's the ongoing monitoring, and it's the setting up of systems that is the most important piece, more important probably than even the audit. And so, depending on which group you go with, you know, there will be additional cost, and depending on which, you know, which parts of their, of their proposals you want to take, because both of them had proposals for ongoing cost, and I will say that the, the Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Center, there is not a cost to their ongoing training, because they are grant-funded, and, as the way they are, they are set up. So, you can partner with them, you know, multi-year partnerships, and the cost associated to the district is primarily, as we bring, if we were to bring their trainers in, to be paying for their travel and, and lodging and things like that, but the actual daily rate is covered through their grants that they're supported through.
Is there any way to get the proposal for, because we only have the links to the two, right?
That is correct.
So, could we have the Great Lakes Equity?
So, they don't, they do not do audit work.
Okay, that was one of the words, just the work afterwards, okay.
Yep, so, these two are the two audit proposals, they don't actually do audit work, the, the third one doesn't actually do the audit work.
Okay. And, and I guess maybe a question to fellow board members, Sue, how many more would you like to see?
Uneven number, five.
Five more or five total?
I would like to just see on my tablet here, five ideas of how people do equity audits. I, you know, I, I looked through who they even identified as, the groups that, that intersect, you know, race, gender. One of them limited to just gender, and then finally, one of them said gender identity. I mean, I want to know what are they really, and we haven't had our last mental health report from YARBIS, so I, I just feel like we're hurrying along, but we need to really take some good, steady beginning steps, and I'd like to see more ideas about just what an equity audit is. And, you know, I realize I'm probably the least familiar with it, Bruce, you're, you're much more knowledgeable in these areas, so I had to go back and type in equity audit, and read about a stunning one back in 2015 in Atlanta, Georgia, and so on. So, I, I tried to do a little background for myself, because, you know, I'm not that familiar with it, but I feel like we should pick a company that really is a nice fit for us.
Yeah, and I wasn't challenging, Sue, I just wanted to make sure that...
No, I know you weren't, Bruce, no, 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 I didn't take it that way.
I, I think all, I, I just wanted to make sure we had clarity for Nick, so he knew, like, you know, if we're going to have more, we want to make sure we've got, I think five's a good number, you know.
No, I'm, I'm not a fighter.
Yeah, no, 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 I know. I wasn't taking it that way, I just, I, I think, you know, being clear for, for guidance is important. I do also believe that, you know, moving forward fast is, is important. I don't, I don't want to wait until the end of the school year to get something back, so it is good to keep this rolling, if you could come back with some of those, I think that, that would be helpful. I'm also thinking to make sure that we get to the next board meeting, and we, we have enough time to review them in advance so that we can have a good dialogue, maybe at a work session on it, would be helpful. Is that something that's realistic, Nick?
Yeah, I will, you know, I'll, I'll reach out and, to some additional school districts, and see additional firms or consultants that we can use. You know, one of the, the challenges will just be, you know, they usually don't turn over a proposal in a matter of a couple days, it usually takes them at least a week to 10 days. So, I will do everything I can to try to have these three additional proposals by the November meeting, and start working on that this week, so that you have three more proposals to, to review for the November meeting as well.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I would just echo what Sue had said about, make sure we look at the background of these companies, and any, you know, any political strife as a result of their business in our community. I think we really want to remember it's about the students and the community, not about politics.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Heather?
Yeah, Mr. President, so I'm, I'm just reflecting, you know, when we, when we started talking about this specific audit planning this March, and I'll say started, because I think since I joined the board four years ago, I think every WASB training that we go to, and then the specialized trainings on equity, I mean, there is, it's, it's not like conversations about equity are new to the administration, to this board, to schools across the state. And, and, and just even in my short tenure, I know I've seen staff start to disaggregate data, which is something that we learned about at the Equity Conference that we went to a couple of years ago, and so it's not... I mean, I want to be clear, I'm not saying that equity work is new since we started talking about it in March, but I, I know when we, or March or April or May, whenever we first had that conversation about kind of where do we go, and we talked about, I, I, what stuck with me is that we talked about three possible things. Maybe it stuck with me because it made sense to me that, that we needed to do some work on our own. You know, I think a lot of what we heard, especially immediately after George Floyd's murder, was kind of, don't, and we heard this tonight, like, don't lean on the BIPOC community to help you figure this out, you need to do some of your own work, and I really think that's what drove us to think about a book study, to be developing a shared, a shared vocabulary, a shared understanding, so we were hopefully starting from a, a shared place. And, you know, because as a school board, we are not legally allowed to meet and have a book club alone, you know, privately in someone's house with a bottle of wine, those conversations have to happen in publicly noticed meetings, so we've done that. The second thing that we talked about was possibly moving ahead with an equity audit, and so I'm, I'm pleased to see, hear that. And then the third thing that we talked about, even in those early conversations, was having some sort of a, an advisory committee, or some sort of a way that folks in the community who are passionate about this issue have experiences and perspectives to share, could, could do that. And we got some of that tonight through the open session, but I, I can't help but wonder, and I don't have the answer, but if, if we want to think about moving ahead with that, even without, you know, prior to getting the results of an equity audit, because I have to believe that increased engagement of the community around this issue is going to be one of the recommendations. And, you know, maybe then we change how that's structured after we get the results of the equity audit and put together more of a plan, but I guess that's something, Nick, that is your kind of thinking about where we go next, and Jamie, as we're thinking about, you know, as a board, where do we go next? To me, that just seems, that just seems logical, that we would think about how we continue to get feedback like we got today, and make sure folks know how they can be part of the conversation. So, no, I'm in support of doing an equity audit, I, I don't have a problem with waiting two to four weeks to prove moving... audit. I don't have a problem with waiting two to four weeks to prove moving to go ahead. I mean, I hear what you're saying, Sue, about this. It's not only a lot of money, which is part of it, but it's a really important choice, right? Right now that we're making a really important decision. And so let's make sure that we feel good about the fit with our district and the firm we're choosing and the people who will be leading the work with us on behalf of that firm if it's a, if it's a larger organization. So, thank you.
Any other comments on this? I guess we don't have a motion at this time, but we've got some inclination to postpone this. I guess where I weigh in on this is, this is an important discussion that Heather's right. It's not the first time that we've addressed this. And we've been talking about ideas from the time that Heather and me and Sue, Heather, Sue and I, went to that conference over in Appleton on equity, a little over a year ago. Maybe it's more, maybe it's like two years. The years kind of go by. But still, I want to be able to move forward. It's a fine line between wanting to show progress on this. It's a little frustrating because we know that we're going to want to do an audit. And we also know that the audit is merely a starting point. The much, much, much more important decision, as you said, Heather, very important, is not who does this audit, but rather how we implement what gets recommended out of that audit, and, you know, who's going to shepherd us through that process. Because I'm kind of like Rob, is that I don't feel competent to be, you know, making those choices. I want to see the results of an audit. And if that audit says you should be hiring a coordinator ASAP, and we put that onus on the, on the coordinator to be setting up these other community forums and focus groups and, because I don't think it's going to be one, two-hour meeting and then, okay, let's wipe our hands and we're done with this. It's going to be an ongoing process. So there's no doubt we want to work with the community. I think the second part is more important because we can go with one company with an audit. We can go with this Great Lakes group. We could go with somebody else to do the ongoing process. But if the consensus is that we want to see more choices, and then after we looked at those more choices, maybe we find somebody quote unquote better that will, you know, produce a result, or maybe we stick with what the recommendation is already. But, you know, I would, I want to see us show progress. So I guess if we postpone this to November, we do. But I'd prefer to make a decision and and move forward. But anybody else have anything on that? All right. So we will look for that additional input on choices, and board members can review that prior to the November action meeting. Next up is the 2020, 2021 Certified Staff Adjustments. Everyone had Andrea's memo. Andrea, you've presented on this now to the board, well, previously in the work session. And is there anything more that you wanted to add?
No, I won't rehash everything that was discussed. I think we, I modified the memo to reflect the board's wishes to apply or utilize this or spend those dollars essentially as laid out in the proposal, not over multi-year plan, but over the initial year. So I did update that memo from the board work session.
Okay.
And the, just the second part of the proposal, we were planning on talking about at the work session in October and can still get implemented this year. It's just that part of the proposal was, was, you wanted more information on that part, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And so this is retroactive?
Yes.
Okay. And I have to say, this is a long time coming. You know, I think, you know, Bob and the rest of the board would agree that this is a long time coming. So thank you for all that work. And I'd like to make a motion to accept the, this first phase, if you will, the Certified Staff Proposal Adjustment.
Second.
All right. There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Nay. The ayes have it. The first adjustment for the specified certified staff is adopted. Next up is the School Closure Matrix. Turn it over to Nick.
Yep. It's linked in your agendas. Tim, I think I'll also have it up on the screen as well. But, you know, as we talked about at the last meeting, you know, we were going to look at our School Closure Matrix. You know, the direction we got from the board is, you know, as we do these things, as we try to tweak and fine tune what what's going on. What I've done is created multiple ones for you to to take a look at and and get feedback on. And if there's one particular that that we want to go with, but I just want to go through them real quickly. So the existing matrix is the very first page on this PDF. And what this is, is you can see that if we were to make the decision today, and and again, the calculation's somewhat rough because we really rely on the state to come out with that burden rate number on on that Wednesday date, is we take that state number. But basically, what I've done to create the burden rate here at the 37.3, or sorry, 37.7 is counted up for the last 14 days on the individual daily total on the St. Croix County's website. And then I, you know, that's, that's how many cases we've had for 91,000 people. And then basically rationed it up to as if we had 100,000 people in our county. That came out to be basically about 369.4, 369.5, I think, cases. And so, as you know, we've, we take that 100,000, we bring it down to groupings of 10,000. So it's divided by 10. So just as a recap. So if we were to apply our existing matrix to our current situation as we are right now, we would, in all, you know, in all buildings, you can see where we'd be, would be in the yellow, which would mean that early childhood, 4K through six and ninth grade would be face-to-face, and then seventh and eighth, and then 10 through 12 would be in a hybrid model. And that's in, that's in every building. And you're able to look at at some of those. Some of the feedback that we've gotten from people is they don't like that our matrix along the left-hand side has an average daily percentage of kids out as it relates to COVID, or positive COVID cases. And so we started to have a discussion to look at, okay, if we want to do just a total count, what could that potentially look like? And so what you have here on the next, the next page, is it's a change on the left-hand side to a cumulative count. So basically, this is looking at number of positive cases over the last 14 days for each of the buildings, and that's that number that's in blue. This does not change any of the county levels. This purely changes the number of cases. And what we, what we did is we looked at, because at the high school and middle school, trying to look and see, okay, how do we, about how many cases did it take over a two-week period in the past to get to certain percentages? And so, and what would it, what would it take, you know, in total cases? But at the high school and middle school, because we don't basically cohort our kids, for example, they mix with classes, they, there's a lot more mixing at the high school, middle school compared to the elementaries. What we looked at doing was saying, okay, if we take a half a percent, instead of 1%, we take a half a percent at at the high school and middle school of staff and students in the building, and have that kind of be our delineating number, and, you know, total cases per two-week, per two-week period. So at the high school, essentially, it would be, the first column would be, or the first row, I'm sorry, would be 10 cases. So it says less than 11. We kind of learned our our lesson a little bit from our last original matrix because there was some overlap of the numbers. It was unintentional. And so we just want to show less than 11 cases. So that'd be 10 and 10 or fewer in the first column. And then the second would be 11 to 20 cases, and the third would be 21 to 30 cases. And then the the fourth row would be anything over 30 cases in a 14-day span at the high school. At the middle school, it is less than, it's seven or fewer cases at the middle school. And then it's eight to 14 cases, 15 to 21 cases, and then more than 21 cases in a, in a two-week span. And then at the elementaries, all, all six elementaries, although they do differ in population a little bit, essentially what was was set up is basically that it's three or fewer cases is in, you know, row number one, then it's doubled, you know, you know, four to six cases, and then seven to nine, and then anything greater than nine for each of the buildings. And so what I went in and did on the second sheet is said, okay, if we just changed the case count, you know, went to a case count instead of an average daily percentage, where would that put us in each of the buildings based on our our current numbers? And you could see that, you know, what it would do is without adjusting any of the county numbers, it would put the high school into complete virtual, and it would put Holton Elementary into a hybrid model in the, without adjusting any of the county numbers. So you can kind of see how that, and the rest of the, the rest of the schools would stay in the yellow as we, as we work through it. So the next sheet, because you have five of these, and we'll go through and explain it, and they kind of look, they look similar. So the next sheet on here has no changes to the county count. There, so they're the same county numbers across the top as we've had in the previous matrix. It has the case count down the left-hand side versus the average percentages. But the biggest difference is we took grade seven and eight and lumped them with 4K through six plus nine. So basically, it becomes a 4K through ninth grade and then 10 through 12th grade type of separation. The biggest reason we, you know, to look at that was the case counts at the middle school are extremely low compared to the high school. And so lumping them in with the high school, you know, wanted to give you an option to look at and say, okay, this is an option potentially where basically we're looking at K9 together and and 10, 12 separate. In this model, you can see that, and apologize for the formatting error that I have on there because it kind of split the 10 through 12 virtual. But with this model, the high school would be completely virtual. The middle school would be completely face-to-face. And all the elementaries except Holton would be face-to-face. Holton would be in a hybrid model. So the biggest change to this compared to what I just showed you is basically the middle school would be 100% face-to-face. So this is where it's actually gets to be, you know, a little bit more substantive changes to the model. And this next one on page four is what we have done is we have not changed the overall top number in the, in the matrix. So 50-plus is still 50-plus. The one thing that we did is instead of it, the fourth column over having a basically 30 to 30 to 50, it's now 40 to 50. We slid it actually to the left. So we reduced the number of cases, you know, going back to our case count along the left side. However, we did raise what was going on in the county because what we are hearing from parents and what we heard from the board at the last meeting was, we really want to put more of an emphasis on what's going on in buildings. Not that we don't want to continue to to care about what's going on in the county, but we want the buildings to drive it. One of the things that I think you'll see with this, even with this change, all of the buildings stay essentially where they would be under the original matrix. The only difference actually is Holton goes to hybrid. Whereas in the existing, in the existing matrix, the current one, Holton doesn't go to hybrid. So actually, the changes that we would propose, where you change the county levels and the and the count levels actually becomes, you know, you can see how the focus is really what's going on in the buildings more than the county. It is not, it is not changes to all of a sudden take our high school back to full face-to-face or anything like that. Even in the change with this matrix, it it keeps it kind of the way, the way it was under the old matrix. It just feel that it it puts more of an emphasis on the buildings. Then the last one is essentially that same thing, except it moves seventh and eighth grade in with, with 4K through six and nine. So there's five options. You can stay with the current matrix as it is. And again, I think the thing that we get the most questions about is the average of the positive daily percentage. I mean, that's, that's the thing we absolutely get the most percentage of, or questions about. And so by changing it to an actual count of cases over 14 days, hopefully that clears up some of that confusion. There isn't a great way to give you exactly, how do you, how do you go from that count, or that average to just a count. You know, we think we, we've done it as as well as we could. But again, it's, it's, it may not be perfect through there. What questions do you have?
Mr. President?
Rob?
So does administration have a recommendation?
Yes. I mean, the recommendation would be that we would change the middle school placement and put it in with 4K through six plus nine. So you basically have a 4K to nine look at things. And again, it goes back to the fact that we aren't seeing a lot of cases at the middle school. And recommendation would be to go to a, to a, if you're going to go to a case count on the left-hand side, that you do adjust the county numbers. I, I, I don't think the situation we're in right now warrants the high school going to completely virtual, nor does it, you know, I don't think that's going to go over very well, to be quite honest with you. So, so I guess if you were looking at one of the five models, it would be the model that is on the, the very last page, which is changes to the county counts and changes to the middle school. Again, even with making these changes, understand that it will be more restrictive than if we just leave the matrix the way it is. I mean, and the the biggest restriction would be, as the way it's looking, Holton is going to be in a hybrid under this model, starting next Monday for two weeks. All of the other buildings would essentially be where they are now, with the exception of seventh and eighth grade going back to full-time on on Monday.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Question for Dr. Lett and maybe for Tracy, but did we keep like an accounting of the remarks and emails? And I don't know if we had anything on the website. So did we keep an accounting of, yes, change it or don't change it?
We certainly have that information, but I couldn't tell you, like, off the top of my head what, there wasn't a tally of information coming in. I would say that there was probably more people who reached out to say, put more weight on what's going on in our schools over what's going on in the county. But I, I mean, that's what we're seeing as far as emails that came in.
Mr. President?
Yes, Heather?
So I know, Sue, we don't get all of the communications that go to the district, but I was kind of asking myself the same question earlier today, thinking about the, I don't know, 15 or 20 emails that we've received as a group from community members. And I think they're about two to one stay the course. That was my quick count, two to one people who were saying, this is no time to change, versus those who were saying, I think we should be changing the metrics. I know when we talked about this two weeks ago, I was a little bit like, yeah, it does kind of seem like sending the middle school home right now seems a little odd when they've only had one positive case. But I think since that time, have been thinking a lot more about what we don't know. And I alluded to this earlier, that we don't know the extent to which kids in our schools are asymptomatic and are contributing to community spread. And so when I look at the alarming numbers in St. Croix County, you know, over the past 14 days and and that trend, it does not seem like it should be a time when we are, when we are de-emphasizing, especially if half of those cases are in, are in Hudson. You know, also looking at positivity rates in St. Croix County, I know Minnesota right now is around 5%, and they have pretty, a pretty strict matrix for schools. Statewide, Wisconsin's at 18%. I did go and pulled the Excel table of the, the daily numbers for St. Croix County. I did go and pulled the Excel table of the, the daily numbers for St. Croix County since the beginning of the pandemic, and we've, we've had only thirty-one days total when our positivity rate was greater than ten percent, um, in St. Croix County. Um, eighteen of those are in the past thirty days. So our positivity rate is increasing, um, and, and it's, and it's high now, we have, and we, our highest was eighteen percent on September tenth, so about a month ago, we had almost one in five people who were tested were testing positive. So, um, to me, because we do not know the extent to which kids are, are, are contributing to community spread, and because we do know that kids are very reluctant to get tested because they know if they test positive, they in turn have to identify their close contacts, and that means pulling your buddies out of sports for two weeks. You know, so I, I think there are enough things that make me worried about what we don't know, um, when it comes to the, the level to which our kids are contributing to community spread. Um, I lean toward not changing things. I think the version that we didn't see, Nick, because I do like, I think for parents, it's easier to see a number in that left-hand column, it makes it more quantifiable. I don't think we have a, an option that shows what if the only change was that we converted that percentage in the, in the current version to a number? And I think if we did that, I don't think Holton then would be go, going hybrid, right? I mean, they would stay where they are in the current one, but I think it makes it more, um, palatable for parents to get their arms around what that column means.
I think that's option two, actually. Option two is the one that changes the percentage to a case count?
I think, I think every one of them, it drops it in half, though.
Yeah.
It lowers it to half percent.
Okay. Yep, yeah, and so I think that's, that's the, that's the big piece is, um, we did lower the thresholds and the case counts, um, to get them down, but I mean, it's, it, it's just, it's really, it's, it's, it's hard to kind of determine that completely. Um, you know, we were trying to look at, we were trying to look at, for example, um, there were, there was a, a two-week period, um, we were trying to look at, at the high school, for example, um, you know, there was, there was a two-week period, and how many cases we had in a two-week period, and what did that come out to be percentage-wise as far as? Because one of the things that you have to understand is, um, not every case is out for the full ten days of the reporting period. Some of them start beforehand, some of them start, some of them start afterwards, uh, and so, uh, in order to get to the one percent, you know, at the, at the high school, um, if we just went straight one percent, uh, similar to kind of what we did at the elementaries, um, and the element, remember, the elementary, give or take a little bit, because if you go one percent at Holton, you know, might be like two-point-seven, and, you know, one percent at, you know, Rock might be like three-point-six or something like that, so, um, so you just gotta, you know, kind of take that with a grain of salt. Um, it would mean that the high school, we'd move it up to, we'd move it up to twenty would be the baseline, and then it would climb to forty, and then it would climb to, um, sixty as far as the different rows, if we just went straight, straight percentage. Uh, so that would be, that would be the only thing. I mean, and, and we can absolutely keep the metrics, you know, the way it is, and if you want to move middle school only and not change the percentages, you can do that, or you don't have to move the middle school. Um, I can tell you that, uh, the overwhelming emails that I've gotten in support of making changes has been related to middle school, because people are just kind of wondering, how could we possibly be sending middle school into hybrid, when originally we only had, you know, one, one case, and then since then we've had two? So, um, that's, that is one, that is one of the challenges.
So, Mr. President?
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Hanson.
So there, um, there's not wild swings, you know, from one to the, I mean, there are a couple changes, yes. Um, but if, if you were, there isn't an option just to pull the middle school out on here, is there? It would basically be the first existing page, but you would just treat the middle school differently?
That, yeah, that's correct. I mean, I guess I could have made option six. So you, you could, uh, treat the middle school differently and leave the matrix intact as is?
I mean, to me, that seems like a very reasonable, uh, go-forward plan without changing the matrix, but just having the middle school on its own. And that way, we still get a chance to review it over the next couple of weeks when we get back together, and, you know, keep these at our fingertips just to see, you know, if there's anything more that we bring from it, but I, I too am almost in favor of just keeping kind of it as is, uh, you know, for the time being. Um, but I would be fine having the middle school looked at on its own.
Mr. President.
Yeah, Rob.
You know, I, uh, I agree with Bruce and Heather. The thing that, uh, and I want our kids to be in school, because that's the, frankly, the best thing for them.
Mm-hmm.
But that said, you know, to Heather's point about the asymptomatic cases that potentially could be floating around, we, we simply don't know what we don't know, and that puts our staff and our teachers and others at risk. Um, so I guess that, and certainly, this isn't a one-and-done discussion, we have the opportunity, if things change, to bring this up again, is that right, Nick?
Yeah, I mean, you guys can, you can change it anytime you want, um, and so...
Not that we want to, but...
Yeah, I mean, a- absolutely. I mean, in, in, you know, we've said, this has got to be a fluid situation. I mean, to be quite honest with you, we didn't envision a time when we would have a ton of cases in the community and not a ton of cases in the buildings. I mean, we just, um, because, you know, it's interesting, because when I had this conversation with Public Health a week ago, they said, well, why are you focused so much on what's going on in the county, why aren't you focusing on what's going on in your buildings? And I go, because two months ago, when we created this, you said to us, focus on what's going on in the county. And, you know, and, and so at that time, we didn't have any other real data available to us, we didn't have five weeks' worth of school data, and so, um, we, you know, we felt like it was, you know, we were sitting in a reasonably good spot, so, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, uh, it is definitely a moving target, there's, there's no doubt about it. And so I know there were a lot of concerns that people would think that, you know, we were going to change the matrix in an effort to get kids back to school five days a week, and that was the whole plan of it. That was never, it was never the, the goal, the goal was just to adjust the matrix so that it was more emphasis on what's going on in the buildings and less on the county, but as you saw, it doesn't, it doesn't all of a sudden bring everybody back to school five days a week, and so, um...
Can I? Yeah, I just had a question on that last comment that you made, because I think that's the best point. Sure, we got some emails in the last two weeks since this was brought up at the work session, but what information did any of those people have as to what was going to be proposed, other than they had this big fear that we were going to try and skew the numbers to get everybody back to face-to-face? Which, it's obvious that in what was proposed, does not do that, it does not get us back to face-to-face with the same numbers. If anything, it's more safe for Holton, because Holton would then go to a hybrid model.
Yeah, I mean, under, under this plan, I mean, it's, it's definitely going to be more restrictive as it relates to building-level numbers. I mean, there's just, there's just no doubt about it.
I just think, I just think there was some unknown, you know, I mean, it wasn't, we just said, go back and look at it, I, I don't know...
Right, and now that we did look at it, and I'm still, I have not changed, for my thinking is that we should be basing it more on what's happening in our buildings than what's happening in the county. It's why we're not basing it on state numbers either, because what happens in Madison, Milwaukee shouldn't dictate whether or not our parents get to send their kids to school, or our kids get to have face-to-face instruction.
Yeah, but it's, it's fair to understand that, you know, some in communities certainly would, would be, uh, more wary of just what's happening in our, in our county. Um, you know, a lot, a lot of different perspectives out there, n- n- no one's right.
Exactly, and that's the thing, is we didn't have a lot to go on, now that we have a little bit more to go on, why wouldn't we adjust it so that we try to hit what, you know, our goal is, and that is to make it safe for our kids in the individual buildings?
Yeah, and, and I, I think our, our first go at it, to, to me, um, was a, was a, was a good plan, you know, I mean, we've, we're what, five weeks in, six?
Mm-hmm, six.
Um, you know, just to, to continue to monitor it, I, I think in, in a time where the numbers are continuing to climb right now, we're seeing peak numbers, um, none of these changes makes a, a, you know, a huge shift in our buildings, it's just one building.
Exactly, yep.
And I, I think, you know, just to kind of see where things go, I mean, if the numbers again go up next week and we're sitting here talking about this, and, you know, yeah, we may need to, to make sure it gets more restrictive on the building level, um, but I think for purposes of, of, um, our community, to show them the numbers and the data that was presented, much like we did before, um, and give it a couple more weeks, we're not really losing much, and we're giving our community a chance to, to see these and, uh, weigh in and, and voice an opinion for those that, uh, you know, take the time to go out and actually look at it, so that's, that's all I'm...
Right, I think we got a lot of support for the matrix, I mean, that's, should also be pointed out, what, what sets us apart from a lot of other districts. A lot of other districts aren't doing this, they're not publishing, uh, matrices or metrics, and instead just saying, trust us, we'll make the decision on whatever feels right. So we got a lot of, you know, um, support for having actual numbers. I like the change from having percentages expressed to, you know, actual case counts and so forth, but folks don't want to do the change, I mean, I guess I'm just one board member, but, um...
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Uh, to echo what Bruce has stated, I would be in support of the middle school being grouped with four K, or K through nine, four K through nine, early childhood. Uh, the percentages being shown, if you want to continue to show them as a percentage, but also to show them as a number, um, not having that percentage, but just the number that it would translate to, and keeping the community levels the same for the coming two-week period.
Okay. So what I'm, so what I'm hearing you say, just to kind of recap that, is, um, and I'm not saying you're making a motion, but I'm just recapping so that if somebody does say that...
It can be stated as a motion.
It's a motion.
Yeah, well, it, so it is, seventh and eighth grade, it basically becomes a four K to nine grouping, right, seventh and eighth grade goes along with sixth grade, and that, um, we would keep the matrix as is, other than that change, except we would also show so that people could at least see the number of how many cumulative cases we've had over fourteen days, but not necessarily that impacts the percentages, is that what I'm hearing?
If that cumulative number is, is what translates to the percentage.
Okay.
If, if that's how the, if that's how the percentage was being factored, which I, I think is why it's so confusing, I'm, I'm not clear on how that was being determined.
So, so the cumulative number was basically taken as, uh, half a percent of the actual, um, people in the high school and middle school, and one percent of people roughly in each of the elementaries, roughly, because some of the elementaries are bigger than others, but basically, on average, the average elementary. Go ahead, Sue.
Oh, Mr. President, um, and Nick, um, is there any way we can just keep the matrix, um, as we have it, but just in a separate, I don't know what you want to call it, document or chart, just each week when you update the public, just tell them the number? I mean, I still keep the percentage, but then, like, you know, I, I learned about Holton because a, a parent and friend of mine, uh, told me, so I'm just asking, can we do both, but keep the matrix, because, and then decide later, maybe in a couple weeks, revisit if we feel we need to?
To change it to more of a case count instead of the percentage, okay. Uh, but, um, in my hearing consistency on wanting to move seventh and eighth grade in with...
Mr. Pres, I, I would not vote in favor of that motion, and, and in my mind, I see, I see middle school as being much more like school in that, um, in elementary school, it's easier to keep those kids in pods. So you have a group of twenty-five-ish kids that we've been really focused, and our staff have worked hard in a way that's unlike any other year to try to minimize their exposure to other pods, to other staff. Um, once you get to the middle school, even though we have a house system, they, those kids are moving, I'm, I'm assuming still this year, I don't have a middle school anymore, but are moving from room to room, is that correct?
Yep.
And so when you think about the exposure, not only for the kids, but for the staff, and those, those middle-aged kiddos, just because of age, are more likely to be out in community, more exposed to their high school siblings, um, to, to me, um, that, that feels much more like a high school setting. In my mind, you know, when we look at the, the guidance that initially came out, and, you know, we weren't, we, we did the best that we could with distancing, et cetera, when you look at the governor's recent mask mandate, which excludes schools, I get it, but there still is a statewide mask mandate, and everywhere that we go, they're telling us to distance and to stay home when you can. Um, I don't think virtual learning, virtual learning's very challenging for elementary kids and for their parents, whereas middle and high school kids are more able to independently learn virtually. Um, I am in favor of, and I'm, I'm not saying never, never to changing, but I would be much more in favor of and would vote to continue with our current, uh, matrix, at least for the next, um, two-week or two, two-week periods until we have a chance to meet and get more feedback about, about what, what's happening with rates in our counties and in our schools, and how the conversion to, um, more kids being on IDL is, is, uh, is going.
All right, that's Heather's comment, we don't have a motion on the floor until we have a second, but, um, is there a second to Carrie's motion to include the middle school in with K-four through, um, make it K-four, four through nine?
Can I just ask one question on that?
You have a point of order, sure, what's your question?
Um, does it change, uh, how those students, where they would fall, would they still be hybrid for seventh and eighth?
No, uh, seventh and eighth would, the middle school would go back to face-to-face.
They would go back to face-to-face.
I mean, currently sixth grade is face-to-face.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if you group, if you group seventh and eighth grade with them, they would be the same thing.
Okay.
I'll call again for a second to Carrie's motion to include the middle school in with, uh, elementary and ninth graders. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. So now there's a motion, a second, any other discussion?
Mr. President, I would just reiterate that with the rate trend in our county, it seems like a very odd time to be, uh, reducing our, um, our, our mitigation strategies.
And is there any other comments? I guess my comment would be with, um, a point zero-seven percent at the middle school, I don't think it's fair to seventh and eighth graders that they lose face-to-face instruction when there's only one case at the middle school. I think it's, those kids should be back to face-to-face until, you know, there was some other change, but...
Mr. President, if we were doing universal testing of middle schoolers and that was the rate, I would concur.
All right, is there any other discussion or comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, which is to keep the matrix as it is expressed in, uh, counts and percentages, um, with, and the only change being to allow the middle school to be counted with four K through nine? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, well...
Mr. President, I'd like to make a voice vote.
Okay. Do I? I think we have our, I think I'll go from, okay, Bowman?
Yeah, the nays have it.
Okay, well, I heard them come in, I think simultaneous, and then kind of one after the other, so those in favor, I guess, raise your hand, those in favor of the motion. Those opposed? Okay, so the motion dies, all right?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to keep the matrix, uh, metrics as is.
Well, I don't think we need a motion, because to, the motion would have to be to change it, the matrix is what it is, we've already passed it as a board, so we'd have to, um, you know, if we were suggesting a change like we just did with the middle school, then we need a motion, but is there any, unless somebody thinks that we need, we want to reaffirm, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with doing motions to reaffirm.
Mr. President, there was one person who emailed this week and said that we had, we had never formally adopted it, and I, I have to confess, I thought we had formally adopted it, um, if we haven't, then I think that would make sense, but I, I think we formally adopted it, supported the administration's recommendation for the matrix, okay, yep.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I hear people nodding their head and...
No, we did adopt it.
Yeah, okay, all right. So anything further on that, otherwise we'll move on to, on the agenda? Uh, next up is school calendar committee guidance. Dave?
Yes, thank you, and I promised to keep this one short. Um, so we received some guidance, uh, last, I guess, late last, um, summer about... So, we received some guidance, uh, last, I guess, late last, um, summer about the school calendar. And with everything happening, we thought it would be prudent to bring it back to the board to make sure that, uh, we have a full understanding of your guidance. Be meeting with the school calendar committee in about a week, on the 20th. And, um, it, it, once we meet, it doesn't take long to put the calendar together. The, the only thing that I wanted to make sure the board fully understood was the one area where there is, I would say, maybe a significant discrepancy between the guidance of the board and the general direction or the general thing we hear from the committee would be the compacting of the school year and making sure we're out the first week in June. I will tell you, as you know, there is no perfect calendar, and it's always compromise. You move one thing, it affects everything. So it's one of those deals that when there aren't days off at all built into the school year, when you're experiencing that, that can be difficult, it can be stressful. But then, when you're out in June, there's an appreciation for the fact that that was the case. So I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I did want to bring it to the board and make sure that that guidance was solid. And honestly, the other reason we brought this to the board was, um, there was some information about flexibility with, um, the start date. It turns out, in everything I'm reading, I don't think there actually is as much flexibility as we thought maybe there, there would be. But that was another reason we had it on the agenda. So just to open it up to comments and feedback and guidance from the board.
Mr. President?
Yes, Heather.
Question, um, so I've been hearing, as I'm guessing many of you have, kind of musings about, is this the end of the snow day? You know, now that, now that we're able to use virtual instruction. But it did make me wonder, I know that when we're making sure that we meet our instructional hour mandate, built into the calendar is an assumption of some days missed due to weather closures. Do we have thoughts about that, and does that give us the ability to put back in a day or two of time off and still have the compacted schedule? Are we thinking that we might use virtual when we have to close school due to weather? Would love to hear kind of if you've talked about that.
So, a, a couple of things in terms of using, um, virtual to cover inclement weather. That works out if you can plan well in advance. It's not something that if a big storm comes through or something happens, uh, you know, late, without a lot of advanced warning, it'd be very difficult to transition. The secondary level, not as challenging, because kids have Chromebooks, but it, we have to go through a lot to deploy devices to get all students ready. Having said that, yes, there's certainly more of an option for that or, or more of a path to that, um, eventuality than there was in the past, given everything we went through. But, um, I don't think it's just a slam dunk that that absolutely would be the case. So, if you're listening out there, kids, can't promise there won't be snow days.
When Tracy calls at five in the morning?
Right.
There's, there's a couple, a couple other items related to that. We do have a contract with staff for a certain amount of days. And so, um, if, if, you know, I think it was agreed upon a long time ago originally that we weren't going to do, we weren't going to make up up to two snow days. And that was a while back. And we changed that two years ago or something like that, 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 um, essentially, uh, we may, may not make up snow days, but a lot of it just depends on the amount of hours that we have to have. And so, um, I just, my, my biggest caution, as it's been through this whole process, is if we don't go to school as many days as we go to now, the only way we can do that is to take time away from kids. And so, um, unless the board's wanting to take time away from kids, uh, because I don't think, we, we don't have an excessive amount of PD days. Uh, we have what I would consider one of the minimum amounts of PD days in districts that I've worked in. So, um, the calendar is what it is. If we're not going to start until after September 1st, the likelihood of us getting out, you know, the first week of June is a goal, but not necessarily a guarantee. And so, um, that's, that's something that we, we have to be cognizant of. You know, I think also, in talking about the equity work, um, you know, we look at certain holidays and certain days that we have off. Is there any specific holidays or are there any specific recognitions that the board would like the calendar committee to take into account? Or changes to what we've currently done, uh, as we, as we go through this? I would say that, um, I think you'd be hard-pressed to all of a sudden decide that you're going to go to school all the way through, or would it be a normal winter break? I think that would knock over well in the community regardless, um, but, uh, is there anything else?
I, I would concur, Nick. I mean, in the, what, almost eight years Bruce and I have been on the board, um, I would say we've had other issues become big focuses of comments and so forth. And about the only time you get a big uproar is when you start messing with spring break. And, uh, other than spring break and winter break, you know, whether you take a day off, you know, this place or that place, I guess, the one question that we should have a discussion, and I'd like to hear other board members comment, is do you think we should have the kids in school on Martin Luther King Day? Or should not have kids in school on Martin Luther King Day? Should we make it a day where we, you know, focus it on him and so the kids are learning about that? Or should we celebrate his contributions to our country by just not having any school and people just having a snow day? Yes?
I, I think the answer's going to come in our equity study. Because, you know, one of the things we keep hearing is, let's not just have a focus on, um, one month or, you know, whatever month it is, Black History Month or something, but to, um, make this part of the, make our, our attention to, um, equality, um, part of a whole fabric and not just one spot on that fabric, so...
I concur.
And, Mr. President, I would think that, once we do get in place some sort of a, an advisory committee, calendar issues would be a perfect sort of question to bring to that committee. Because there might be other calendar issues that we're not even thinking about, you know, that they would, would bring to attention as, as considerations, so, um...
But, and, and that's fine, but now we've just delayed hiring a company to do an audit in other months, so we're going to probably be delaying when we're going to bring this up. And when it comes to calendar, if there's anything that we learned, right, Bruce, in the last seven and a half years, is that you got to let us know when spring break in 2022 is, and you got to let us know at least 15, 16 months in advance, because they got to buy those tickets and do that stuff.
Yeah.
So are we willing to push off the calendar discussion into, you know, some future date? Or, you know, Dave, I'm assuming this is just like the process we've done before, where we get teacher input, we get family input in general, if there's going to be any major changes. But when do you want to have this calendar ready to roll and have the board approve it?
Good question. So typically, um, we meet as a calendar committee, uh, you, two to three times, and, um, it takes about maybe three weeks to complete that process. We'd look to bring that calendar back to you, um, November, December, at the absolute latest for action. It would be the goal. Having said that, we, you know, we did a few years ago, quite a few years ago already, we did a pretty expansive survey to get information about the calendar. We have not done that again. That might be something we want to consider, probably not this time again, given the time, and I think some survey fatigue that our families are probably experiencing. Might make sense, next iteration, that we would get after that.
Okay. Any other comments? Um, give Dave some direction so he can go back to his committee.
Mr. President?
Yes.
In answer to your specific question, I would say that the, the feedback I've gotten in the last several years when we haven't had Martin Luther King Jr. off is, is that we appear disrespectful. So, I don't, I don't know that people are going to consider it a snow day or that they'll actually go down and actively participate in a parade, but, um, that's what I've heard.
Okay. Heather, did you have a comment too?
Well, I was just going to go back to the initial question, because I'll, I'll admit that I've, I've lost it a bit. So, you, you said there's the, the one area where there's a difference between the committee that works on the calendar and the board's direction is around this compression. So we have compressed more than they would recommend. And, and what, what is, what is, what aren't they getting then, that they would get with a slightly less compressed calendar?
Sure, I'll, I'll share the most tangible example. So in the past, there was a concept of comp days. That comp day concept was, you have conference weeks, so you're working a couple evenings, and then typically, there was a day off around that time. Though, that day still exists, because teachers are getting paid for the conference night as a day of instruction. So, that still exists, but we essentially moved those comp days to the end of the year, meaning, we're going to get out, we'll begin summer break a little bit sooner. So, a, an option would be to build in a day or two around conference season to provide a break, um, at that time. Now, as Nick had mentioned, professional development is another thing. We had moved a professional development day to the beginning of the year. So we, instead of having the three days that we typically do PD, we did four. That was for a very specific reason. That allowed us to not kick into the next week, based on the board's direction. Do what you can not to kick into the next week. This allowed the, us to do that, but now we're feeling that, because we're living that and going straight through without, you know, without a, a day off. And we've heard from teachers that that can be challenging.
Okay, so this might be something that could be looked at in the work session in late November? As early as that?
We could work up, what, what we could do is work up two versions and let you see how that would play out and, um, and see if that would be helpful in, in providing any guidance, I mean...
That might be a heavy lift, though. I mean, to ask a calendar committee to meet, meet two or three times in the next 20 days?
Yeah, that would be...
I said, end of November, the work session, because if we approve the calendar in December, is that not early enough, or is that too...
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is, typically, we would approve the calendar in December, but typically, we'd start on the calendar committee probably a little bit earlier than we have. But it might be that you might not approve it till January. I just, I mean, we're about 20 workdays away from the next work session, which would be the November work session. Well, I guess, no, it'd be slightly more than that, because I guess we're at a regular meeting. So there, there's, there's a potential, I just, that's a heavy lift. You know, I, I think we, I don't think it would be out of the, uh, question to have the board approve the calendar at the January board meeting and get the feedback by the December work session. And I don't think people are going to be that far behind the eight ball.
And we could just promise the community that we're not going to move spring break from, from, from where it is right now.
Well, from where it is, or, or from where we...
Yeah, because there is no calendar, this is for the, you know, obviously, it's for the following school year, so there, there is no place where spring break is. We haven't gone through that process to determine even the starting point.
Well, that's right, because it rotates.
Yes.
Correct, and it, right, and it, I mean, to, to be honest, it does, if, if the guidance doesn't change and you say, "No, everything that we said is intact, and this is the guidance we want you to take forward", it doesn't take that long to go through the process. There are only so many things you can do. This isn't a, this used to be a more complex process, um, but I think we had, we've had consistency with the calendar committee. It's a lot of the same folks, the same leaders that have provided their input. We do need to change a little bit. We had a few retirements to, um, add on to the team. But, uh, yeah, that, the December timeline for feedback, I think, is more than doable. That'd be just fine. Um, I, I just, I guess, so, would you like to see two models then, at that point?
I, I'd like to see the un-compressed model.
Okay, so, yeah, we can, we, we can do that, and obviously, we'll, we're not talking about, you know, six, seven days. We're talking about maximum of two days, probably. But, again, without knowing how it kicks into the following week in June and so forth, that's, those are some of the nuances that we'll need to work out.
Okay, and, and this, getting back to Heather's point about spring break, is, that's more dictated by when the ACT test and the makeup for the ACT is, rather than anything the committee does, right?
Yes, that, yeah, that's absolutely correct.
Great. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.